A call to order the planning commission regular meeting for March 21st, 2024. I will ask for roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Badger?
Here.
Broker?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Here.
Here. Welcome, everyone. And before you is the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have any recommendations or changes they'd like?
I would like to consider switching new item A with new item B. Do our goals first.
Any discussion? I think it's, as we had talked before, it means the short term rental Ryan and I kind of talked about, it could have gone underneath old business, which would have put it before new business. So that's kind of another rationale why it's first, but we can do any order that the majority would like to have.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, is there a motion? Is that a motion? Yeah.
Sure. Can I make a motion to switch items six A and six B to do the goals first?
Is there a second?
I don't have strong views on this, so I just am curious if, I would love if anyone has views on why we'd do one or the other.
I can define why I think it's.
Okay.
So, so I think it's, we've sort of come to a line where we're at the end of some things we've talked about. Maybe we should set our goals and sort of reset the whole what we're doing is why I thought it might make sense. And if one of our goals of 2024 is to continue this, then it would be, make sense to have this conversation continued.
Okay.
Why, why talk about something that may not be one of our goals?
But it, but it, we haven't finished the work of short term rentals, so.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, did we?
So given that we'll keep the agenda with no second, then does anyone have a motion to approve the agenda as it is?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Jen is approved in your packet. We have the minutes from our February 15th, 2024. Lot of pages of the minutes, so we thank you very much for that.
Nice job.
This may be appropriate time to bring up an item from the minutes. So something, item F talks about the last motion we had last month.
Okay.
Where we actually made a vote on something that wasn't actually part of the agenda. And I think called a motion to re-recommend the moratorium. And we made a change to dates and to the residential areas. I'm just looking for clarification of why we're able to do that. Now, are there any other open, unacted on the items that that could happen in the future?
Okay. The, but there's no, let's first go through and approve the minutes. Is there anything in the minute since we're on the?
I'm unclear to why that was handled. I don't think the minutes document why it occurred very well.
Okay.
That's not him.
Item F.
So you're talking about the short term rental caps and parking with the motion
Yeah.
to reconsider the moratorium on short term rentals?
Yes.
I mean, I can give some initial thoughts, Mr. Chair, and we certainly have legal counsel here this evening. And so I think, Mr. Badger, your question is, how was there, how were you able to make a motion on something that maybe wasn't directly in, you know, in the title of an agenda item or something along those lines? Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
So I, I think there's, there's two things here. One, I mean, the planet, from my perspective, at least from a staff perspective, the planning commission was having a discussion about short term rentals and residential caps. And I, I think a natural, you know, thing that, that, you know, or a board may consider might be a potential moratorium if you're looking at residential caps. And so I, I think that kind of is in lockstep with that. I think the, the second thing to consider is that, you know, the, the planning commission had previously made a recommendation to the city council on a moratorium. And I think that the, the third thing that's important to note is that it wasn't a recommendation on a zoning tax amendment request or zoning moratorium to the city council. If that were the case, then there would have been, it would have been problematic because you would have had to have had a public hearing first. That would have had to have been noticed in the paper. And, and then you would have been able to proceed in this case because it was a recommendation to, that the city council reconsidered the previous police powers related moratorium that was recommended. Then, you know, I, I think that I, I, at the time, actually during your last meeting today, I didn't think that there was a concern with, with the, the planning commission making that, that motion and recommendation. I don't know, Jake, if you have anything you'd like to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the fact that it does kind of naturally flow out of the discussion item that was at hand and is a recommendation to the city council rather than on, on a, on a zoning ordinance. From, from a legal perspective, I don't know that it's necessarily problematic that it wasn't included on the agenda.
Right, because I felt that it wanted, it did, it did fall under the short term rental. We were talking about how we wanted to move forward for this meeting by looking further at neighborhood definitions and density, which then kind of led to, should we also reconsider and recommend to council? Something that they had tabled, it's, you know, had they voted on it previously and voted it down in 2023, then that maybe it might have been different, but it was also tabled in 2023.
Actually, it wasn't tabled, so.
It was.
Can I?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't tabled, it wasn't, it wasn't ever voted.
Never on the agenda, never went on the agenda.
So they didn't table it.
Correct.
It wasn't taken up.
It was a workshop item only, that's right.
Right, so since I was the one who brought it up, it, it was, we were talking about the length of time for Mr. Jurassic to do the work on caps. And I was thinking, you know, I thought, oh, my goodness. I mean, this is months and how, you know, would we consider, you know, kind of resurrecting that motion or the resolution or proposal or recommendation to council? No, and council never did it. I mean, it's sort of a, it's still out there. I mean, they never took it up again. So it was, I mean, for me, it was just, you know.
Okay, well, okay, so I think I understand that it was, didn't fall under a zoning thing. So we were able to, we're able to make any motion and act on it at any time unless it's something like zoning or something to that effect. We could recommend for, to the city council, anything at any time if we had an agreement on it.
Correct in that, yeah, zoning tax amendment, the change of your zoning ordinance would require a, a public hearing before you make that sort of recommendation.
Okay. Oh, I'm, I'm ready to move on the agenda.
Would you, is there anything that you'd like to have had it?
Nope. Well, I'd want to, it should be heard and understood what that, how that occurred.
Absolutely, appreciate it. Then do we have an emotion to approve the minutes?
One more. Minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Right. Minutes have been approved, which moves us to agenda item four, which is public comments. Public comments on the agenda items that are before us this evening. If you're in the room and you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium and online, just give us a hand signal. And if you are going to speak, just introduce yourself with your name and where you reside and tell us what agenda item you'll be speaking in regards to.
Diana Decker, 128 Elizabeth City. I wanted to talk, since rentals are on the agenda. I gave the workshop, I was at the workshop last night, so I gave one of the council members the letter that I wrote regarding property management companies. And anyway, the, the, from going to the short term task meetings, the city council meetings, the, you know, planning commission meetings, the last couple of months, and seeing the zoom in the audience. I started hearing all these property management companies in the area here. And there's new ones that I was just told yesterday from the visitors bureau that have applied. The property management companies in the state of Michigan, to, to manage rental properties, you need an associate broker or broker's license. And that's MCL 339.2501, as outlined in my letter. There's a section in where you fill out the rental application and it will say contact, you know, the owners can go VRBO or whatever. But if it says an agency and there's a company with their contact, you need to verify that they have an associate broker or broker's license to manage that property. So that is the law here in Michigan. And I feel it's a liability for the city to approve an application without those licenses. And in my letter, I also included Cam at Lara. She's in Lansing with licensing division that you can talk to and also Bernie, an attorney, that you can talk to on the requirements for the state of Michigan. Thank you. And I'm concerned about the short term with parking. I, I live up on the hill and so many of you are my neighbors. We have a real problem with parking, but also downtown too. Last summer, I ordered a bunch of food from one of the local restaurants, which we do all the time. But this day I happened to, my grandson wanted to come with me, a little 10 year old. And I, I said, okay, he hopped in the vehicle. I could not find a parking space to pick up the food. And so I finally found one driving around, driving around. And I walked in. There was all these customers outside on the street on tables and covert, no, there's no mask. And I walked in the restaurant, there was no one in the restaurant. There was no one resting in the restaurant. So I'm like, what the heck is, is going, you know, just that point also about the parking. And then also, I'm a part owner of a farm not far away from here. And so I'm waiting on people all day and they're also like, oh, what'd you do today? Okay, we went to Sagatuck and so on. And I think I talked to you, Steve, about a client that had an issue with a rental here and she contacted you. On what, oh, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Jane Everwood, 130 Perryman. I won't bore you with my long history of the community, but parking, I know it's miserable here in town. I do know a couple of places where I can squeeze in. But where I live, it is getting even worse. Just to go down to visit my neighbor, there are so many cars parked at her house just to slide in her sidewalk. It's right across from the ferry. Where people are coming off the ferry, kids are running. There's a lot of cars on both sides. I suspect some of the short term rentals are telling their people to park down there. Maybe some other places. Apartments and hotels. You know, we've been fussing about parking here for 50 years. When are we going to do something about it? What can we do about it? I think maybe we need an, yeah, Steve.
Yeah.
You agree with me?
I do agree, park is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's a safety issue. When you have so many cars and you have people walking around in between the, get that on my way. You don't need, I don't need that. The teacher voice. How can we somehow put a cap? Now, I know Pleasant Street has had a horrible time and other places. No, I got time. This is, this is something we need to work on. The ferry, the fence, and too many cars. With that, I will leave it in your hands.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you.
You'll probably hear that come up a little bit later in our agenda.
I would bet my cat on that.
Yeah. I can assure you on that.
Kevin. Yeah.
Is there anyone online? We have no further ones in the room. I do not see any hands, so with that, we will close out public comments. We do not have any old business carried over, although as we were mentioning before the meeting started, our first item on new business, which could be considered kind of old business as we continue to kind of look at the short term rentals with further discussion on residential caps as well as parking. Ryan, you want me to kind of open or you want to kind of have, you want to give us?
Yeah, I can certainly start. I, I think, so, so this discussion is kind of a continuation of discussion that, that occurred at your last meeting. And just, I think all of you are, are well aware, but just in case anybody watches this, this back later and maybe they're not aware. So you had moved a number of recommendations onto the, the city council at, at your last meeting, including updates to zoning ordinance related to short term rentals. Made recommendations on a short term rental all of the time. All right. Okay, Ryan, you're great, I like that, so. Yeah, a police powers licensing ordinance for short term rentals and made some recommendations on amendments to noise ordinance. And all of those were passed by the city council, so they've been published and, and are in effect. So one of the, you discussed the moratorium already tonight, the, the city council did not enact the moratorium. But based on your discussion at the last meeting, consensus that you wanted to, to kind of study, further study residential caps in certain maybe neighborhoods and do a, a greater neighborhood analysis. Mr. Jurassic, our consulting planner, has been hard at work on that over the last month. So I'm not going to take any of his, his thunder away. I, I think, if it's all right, Mr. Chair, we'll turn it over to him to kind of explain kind of the report that's before you, his methodology, some different thoughts that he had as he was engaged with this. And then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. And David, before I could have turned it over, I just want to make one point. That there has been a new number of different discussions that I've had with commissioners as well as council members. Yes, last month or last council meeting, there was no approval of our recommendation for the moratorium. However, you know, we had already kind of said that we may want to look at some of the neighborhoods. And again, David's going to take us through how he put his initial analysis together. The one thing that I felt that we constantly are reminding people is that if we go back to the short term rental task force, it did make recommendations specifically in there to the, they suggested the planning commission and council continue to review whether or not there would be a need to have limits or caps. So when people say that the moratorium voting, being voted down ended that short term rental.
Right.
There's, has not been a consensus, you know, of that. My feeling from, you know, some of the council was that maybe they weren't in favor of, you know, limiting any new licenses, but they still didn't have the data. And that they were curious if we had more data that we were going to be able to bring forward that wasn't presented by the short term rental task force. And, you know, in hindsight, I wish the task force could have had more time to kind of focus on it. And so you could have gotten that input, but I think we are all capable of trying to take a look at it. And I, David, I think you've done a great job in putting together at least a starting point for us here. And so if you want to kind of walk us through, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to review it. You know, what, what you have kind of created and then we can open it up for discussion and questions.
Sure. Good evening, planning commission members. So yes, based on our discussion last month, obviously there, there's concern with some of the, the current or potential impact of clustering short term rental permits in, in various neighborhoods. So this was really kind of a first look at a, an initial neighborhood analysis. And the goal was to begin to identify and characterize R1 zone neighborhoods where the city may wish to strategically apply caps to the number of permits, possibly apply separation requirements, parking restrictions or provisions and other restrictions. So I really, considering the methodology in this report, this is just one planner's first general look at, at a number of factors that may lead to these neighborhood based restrictions. So again, this is, in my opinion, this is preliminary. This is really, in a way, that helped me to just begin to work through the questions that we're, we're, we're looking to answer over the next month or two. And, and I do consider this a kind of a preliminary and broad analysis, but at a neighborhood level. So based on, on my look, I, I developed 12 R1 zone neighborhoods that were based on common characteristics, common zoning or natural breakpoints. And, and again, this, this is your city, that you know these neighborhoods better than I do. We may end up amending these boundaries or redefining or even picking things, other neighborhoods that, that I did not call out in this report. So I, I, I'm really looking to you tonight to, to get your reaction of, of this initial data and, and this analysis to be able to, to move forward with a further study. So with this, public property and multifamily properties were, were removed from the summary data. Because we didn't want that, that to throw off some of the data concerning the, the median and average lot size. And we were removing public property as well, because there, obviously there's some very large public school properties, city properties that did not want to include in the analysis. Now, we, we can certainly look at multifamily properties if desired. I, I did pull those out, but I think that is a little bit different of, of an analysis. And, and we can talk about that further tonight if you'd like to look at that. But in terms of multifamily buildings, condos, apartments, things of that nature, that might warrant a, a different look and different methodology. So, so some of the factors that were considered in this report, median and average lot sizes, because this really affects the, the dense, the potential density and intensity of areas with short term rental permits. Smaller lots could lead to issues with parking. There's more of a clustering or intensity of noise and activity on smaller lots. So those areas are definitely more concerning to, as opposed to areas where you have a half acre or three quarters of acre or more. The, it's also looking at the number of permits per the number of lots in the neighborhood. So I think this was important to understand where these areas, where we have higher proportions of, of properties with permits. Clustering was another concept. So in, in my methodology, I was using areas where there were three or more abutting properties with short term rental permits or, or a block with the majority of lots having short term rental permits. Now, certainly we, we, there could be other areas that you believe are clustered. So for, for instance, maybe it's, it's each corner of an intersection, that, that could be another one that we use. But again, this was just a first look. It's, it's kind of food for thought and maybe there's a different way to look at these areas. So this is an initial framework. In my mind, it's a little bit more of an arts, not a science at this point. We can certainly look at the boundaries of these neighborhoods, revise them as necessary or redefine them. The, the methodologies can certainly be amended. So I, I did look at the number of permits of, against the, the overall number of lots in, in the neighborhood. This was lots that were either built or unbuilt. So we could certainly look at it against properties that are, they're only built out. And then I had three levels, you know, low, medium and high for, you know, levels of concern in a way. And, and again, that they are, they are based on comparing various neighborhoods. You know, just to give an example, there may be a neighborhood with one short term rental permit and that may be a high concern to everyone that lives around that, that, that neighborhood and near that property. So I, it is, we're not saying that it's not a concerning, it's not concerning to have that one permit or a lower number of permits. But as it relates to a neighborhood level analysis, comparing neighborhoods based on these factors, certain neighborhoods, based on the methodology, are more concerning than others and may be more appropriate for caps. Again, we're not just ruling out certain neighborhoods based on this analysis, but I wanted this to be a first look to, for the planning commission to be able to begin to determine which neighborhoods are, are more appropriate for caps. So, so the objective for tonight, in my opinion, is to seek feedback on the neighborhood observations to possibly narrow down the areas where further study should occur. And if so, i- if we should begin to develop those recommendations concerning the actual number of caps, the separations or, or other restrictions. And then the questions I have are, what are your thoughts on the methodology? And, and should we be looking at these areas in a different manner? Should we be looking at, at the entire area with more detailed analysis? Or should we look at a, a lower number of neighborhoods with, with more detail? So a lot of questions and, and just looking for your reactions on what was prepared this evening.
David, great, thank you. Before we open it up, one question that I did have. When I add up the number of short term rentals that you have listed in these 12 areas, it comes to 163. We have approximately 275 or 280. Are the other 112 to 120 licenses in the commercial districts and within multifamilies that were excluded? Because there's a big difference between 163 and 280.
So yes and yes to that. I think the other factor there is that the, you know, the data or the maps that they were, were looking at were related to like how many parcels had at least one short term rental permit? So if there was a property that had an ADU and a single family dwelling that had two, you know, so there's some of those scenarios that would also get you to a 275 number that.
Okay.
So commercial districts, multifamily, that, that they touched on there and then some lots have, you know, more than one, if they have an accessory dwelling unit that they would have only counted at once for purposes of this.
So why, why would that be counted once, not twice? Because they wouldn't be rented out at the same time?
Well, correct. So if you have the accessory dwelling unit and the single family dwelling has to be a single, single contract. And, and really it, it's challenging to get to, without going like one by one, figuring out which ones are, you know, so. Yep. That, that's kind of what we landed on with the, the short term rental task force, at least looking at which parts had at least one on them, so.
And David, as we move forward, assuming that we're going to be moving forward, is there a way during the short term rental task force, they were able to identify with a dot on each of the properties that actually had a license? So like on this, on your report, we've got, you know, it might say six in a, in one of the areas. Is it possible that they could actually be identified where those six are? Or like if it's 41, you know, just dropping in like the dots on the actual property so you can, so that, you know, so we can visually see the cluster and the density as opposed to, you know, I know that you looked at it, but we can't see where the density is or where the clusters are.
Sure, absolutely. And, and so I think if we prepared a more detailed GIS analysis, we could map the neighborhoods, show specific permit locations based on address information. So again, being, being an initial look at this, this was more of a, a visual counting of, of the, the areas identified within the task force report. And then comparing that to, to the neighborhood boundaries that were developed as part of this, this study. So, so absolutely, we could do a more detailed GIS analysis with that parcel and address information. So that, that can certainly happen.
Okay.
Steve, can I?
Absolutely.
So we have a resident, actually he emailed the, the planning commission who has gone through, I think, GIS, you know, all of the short term rentals and sort of by street has a list of all of the short term rental licenses. That might be helpful to Dave as he's doing this. I mean, I think some of that work might have been done, or at least it would help with that. The other thing that I think would be helpful, I know Granicus ran, you know, the report of what shows up for them. And I know a lot of those, it needs to be kind of sorted through what are, you know, regular bed and breakfast and stuff. It, it probably over reports in some ways and likely under reports people who don't have licenses. I know, I mean, based on the, the letter that, or the email that Mr. Baldwin sent, I, I think we are missing some and it, it would just be, I think the more accurate, especially at this stage, and I, I know this is an impossible task almost, but to really get sort of the base data as accurate as we can and using the Granicus resource if we can would be helpful, I think, especially one, one of just knowing how many we have and then doing it as we do the density.
I, I agree. In fact, it's, it's funny, Steve, that you mentioned the dot idea because I was actually in my neighborhood kind of doing that on there, putting a, literally.
And I kept the short term rental task force and to try to overlay it myself.
Yeah.
Because we had it, but, you know. Now, I guess also one of the questions as we're looking at this, because I know David's already put the work into it and I think it is, there's a lot of information and, and kind of different way of looking at where the density, where the rentals lie. You know, as a commission, because like CJ had already mentioned, you know, our next agenda item is to talk about, you know, 2024, you know, focuses. Knowing that, you know, I didn't consider, you know, short term rentals, I think, you know, several have said it was not concluded. Is this, you know, as we continue to look at this, is this an item that we feel is necessary for us to kind of, you know, spend time on, because it will take more time and more time off David's to kind of go through and determine getting more of the numbers and having to be accurate so that we can make a recommendation. You know, I've heard both sides, some people have felt that, no, you know, that if we don't have the support potentially within council. You know, I've heard both sides. Some people have felt that no, you know, that if we don't have the support potentially within council, you know, do we want to do that? I've also heard the other side, because even one of the members who's not here tonight initially was a no. And then after he had more time to go through and look at these areas and where some of the concentration is, felt that maybe we should. But he's not going to be here to kind of give us his opinion, but I know I got his opinion before he left town. So I'm asking each of you, you know, before we kind of continue to move forward and give David, you know, comments, is this an item? And so that's where it did kind of make sense in some ways, you know, to talk about the 24 goals.
Well, I mean, sure, the issue is not going to go away. And I mean, so we have, I mean, as a community, we haven't really come to closure on the caps discussion. And I think we all suspect or know that if council doesn't you know, address caps either, you know, positively, or I mean, adopt one, decide not to adopt one, or decide not to take it up. There'll be, I mean, a ballot initiative. I mean, there are enough people who are starting to plan for that. So as a as a planning commissioner and as a council member, I feel like we owe our residents the due diligence to do the research so that the community has the benefit of that in knowing how to vote and for the people who would put a ballot initiative together to kind of have a sense of what the data is. I mean, I think that's the fairest thing to do. I also think it might help council have, I mean, they will then have one, I mean, I firmly believe that council needs to to vote on caps. I mean, I think it they we would be remiss to not face head-on one of the most important issues in the community. I'm one vote, obviously. So I do think it's sort of council's responsibility actually to either create policy or not, or intentionally not create it. And I think data always helps better decision-making. And haven't, you know, if council doesn't act, then it gives citizens the information they know to respond to any ballot initiative.
Thank you.
My I was, when I initially talked to Steve about this, I was no. Need to move on. But I'm willing on one condition. Could we get the numbers right? One of the, one of the, I mean, having argued in my professional career, not this particular situation, but others. One of the fastest ways to lose an argument is to keep changing your numbers. And I I don't think anybody has been unwilling to support whatever it is the city needs to do in terms of hiring experts to get these numbers right. And I'm not being critical of this, but again, different numbers. So I am willing to continue to support this issue because I agree with Councilwoman Anderson, that it is an issue and needs to be resolved. And citizens need to understand what the issues are. But again, only if we commit to doing the right research, including numbers. So we're dealing with one set of numbers and we know, I mean, I don't care if you put dots on a map. But please, at the end of the day, how many short-term rentals are there in each of our zoning districts? Density, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But just need that report in order to move forward.
Okay, so you are would be in favor. And you have a feeling of keeping it.
Yeah, I am. I am in favor. I know we're all tired, I guess, for lack of a better word, but I do, I do feel like the the report from the Short-Term Rental Task Force and the comments I heard from council sort of mandated us to see this through to, you know, see through the cap discussion. I would be fine if we wanted to, you know, try to expedite it and, you know, try to, you know, that means maybe having extra meetings, you know, if that's, you know, you know, I I would be fine with that if that's maybe makes it kind of wrap up sooner.
Joe, would you like to? The newest member and also a member who was on the task force, and then we'll get down to.
Well, it's been a long journey. Steve, when you and I talked, I think I shared my opinions, which were not that it's a waste of time, but I wasn't sure that this was going to go anywhere, further discussions of the cap. Holly brings very, I'm not done, sorry. Brings some great points and and I'm more than willing to continue the discussions. I agree, the numbers are important. I think if we are going to continue discussions, all due respect, rather than rushing it, I think we should almost be taking a little bit of a step back and talking about. There's so many different ways. I, like you, my professional career has all been into numbers and you can make numbers, say whatever you want, right? Let's take a step back and determine what our methodology is, you know, and if we're going to do it, let's do it right, right? Let's 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 define how we see the density, right? Whether it includes ADUs, whether it doesn't.
Correct.
I I believe there needs to be. If we're really going to be looking at data, I mean, we're, we spent a lot of time trying to define current state, and that's important. We have to understand that. We also have to understand velocity, right? The track and how many new applications we've been getting, and maybe if we can even do it over the last couple of years. You mentioned at a at the council meeting that we had since our last planning commission meeting, I think you said there were five, at the time, there were five new net new applications, if I'm not mistaken.
That very well could have been at numbers in our.
Immediately went through my head is that, you know, that annualizes to 60 new applications in a year, right? So if let's look at the data, let's take a step back and figure out what what questions we're trying to answer. Get the baseline right, look at some trends. The data can be very powerful. And let people make up their own minds.
So I'm.
CJ?
I I thought we've had some good conversations. I thought we got to a point. I don't felt feel that the STR task force left with a mandate to talk about caps. And caps had been talked about. There was definitely a mandate to to let the police powers act out as a whole, that group said there. And then on page 15, it talks about to continue those those possible recommendations, I think are the words. It was a lot less than a mandate, at least publicly. Maybe there was something behind it. But anyways, that's my position on that. But if we were to go forward, having numbers is a very good idea. One of the numbers that was brought up in many of the meetings was an economic study for Sagatuck. There's been definitely people on here. My biggest issue is that we would lose our businesses and our restaurants and our bars and things that I love about Sagatuck, and I walk down and use all the time. So that's, if we are going to continue, and let's get the numbers, let's get an economic study for Sagatuck. Many people ask for it from the community, from both sides of the argument.
Yeah.
Can I just speak to the point on the task force? The task force acknowledged the amount of work and level of data analysis that was conducted since May 2023, and that continued discussions pertaining to cap should continue.
Absolutely. That's not a mandate.
Right.
Well, it's correction.
They did not get to it. You know, since I wanted to hear by Elsa's comments, the one thing that I kind of felt, and this has been evolving even like what it was with the task force, that my first reaction was if council's not going to approve a moratorium, which would at least stop where we are while we can evaluate, then what is the likelihood that if we did have a recommendation, that we would get the votes? And I think we all kind of felt that initially because it's just right here, and even David's work, you know, I was like, well, should we stop, you know, what he's doing? And then, as I, one of the things, as I had a chance to go through David's work, and you looked at some of the areas and the numbers aren't exact, but you're looking at some areas that have 33, 36, 41%. And you have to ask yourself, these are residential neighborhoods. And maybe it won't go through, but to Holly's point, and I feel myself that one of the things that the planning commission, you know, the direction we took, it started in 2022 and then in 2023, was to try to be much more reactive, to listen to the community and to try to determine if there's things that we should do besides just having site plans come before us or dealing with zoning. And knowing that there's this big outcry, there's approximately, I think there was petition that was done, it's probably got over 100 signatures, you know, saying that they want it, you know, that they were encouraging that there would be further discussion on caps and that. And then knowing that there's a potential of a ballot initiative, I felt that it would kind of be remiss if both planning commission and city council just said, hey, we got this far, we're not going to, we're not going to jump over the last hurdle, which seems to be the hurdle that is the biggest issue because it's the what makes a neighborhood? And do you really need neighbors to be to make it a neighborhood, or is it just a cluster of homes, regardless of whether they're businesses or you're residing in it? And so when I kind of thought about it that way, our role really is to, in my opinion, to take the time and to make, if we feel that we get to a point where we want to make a recommendation, that we make a recommendation. If it doesn't move forward, at least I feel that my position on the planning commission, that I did what I thought was necessary to be able to say to someone in the community, we didn't just back off on something that you thought was very important. And maybe the work that we are doing would potentially eliminate the need for citizens to feel that they have to act because the planning commission and council, who they have voted in. Now, they will have an opportunity to vote, you know, for council members in November, and maybe there'll be some that will run, you know, based upon whether or not this is a topic. But for me, I'd actually, given what I've kind of seen here, and I have some comments if we're going to be moving forward on these areas and what's here, but I would like to see us at least spend some time on our coming months, taking a look at this.
And the one other compelling data point was this Short-Term Rental Task Force survey, which I think it was 68% of people on the Hill and 70% of people on Peninsula West were in favor of residential caps. And overall, the entire city, it was, I can't remember the number, I was going to look it up real quick, but it was more than 50%.
It was.
60 some, 61%. So so are our citizens, and this was of Sagatuck residents, want this.
Right. And that's what I mean. I think it's, but we do have to CJ and to the council members who have been talking about, you know, impacts. There that is that is valid. You know, we do have to kind of look at and think about the impact that it has to the overall city and the economy. But I think that that becomes part of our conversation. Once we get to talk, you know, if we have as a group, think that we want to suggest and make recommendations of limits, then at that point, you know, that becomes more important because it honestly will make a very big difference if we were just saying, okay, we're going to try to keep it status quo, then there really would be no economic impact from where we are currently. But if somebody was saying, well, I think we should have 30% in this neighborhood and 15% in that neighborhood, then that could, over a period of years, takes everybody's grandfather initially, so it will be years before you would have that reduction. But there would be an impact, and we would need to kind of factor that in. So I think it's kind of, in my opinion, we move forward, kind of identifying what we consider our areas, is it by zone or is it by neighborhoods, in helping David get the neighborhoods down first. If we're going to do it as a neighborhood, kind of a conversation. And then getting the numbers so that we can get the numbers within a neighborhood. And then if it appears that we were going to be making recommendations that would have a reduction in what's there, then potentially discussing an economic study so we can have something to kind of fall back on. And how severe would it be if you had a 10% reduction or a 20% reduction? You know, in those numbers. That's just kind of my thoughts.
I'm in, I'm in agreement with that. But again, I think the work has to be done. And then it has to be done in such a way in terms of communication that people get it. It doesn't take, you know, an analyst or someone with a degree in math or analytics to understand it. And I also think that considering what's gone on until this point in time, I think that we need to make sure in terms of whatever it takes, that we're communicating consistently and clearly. And there's plenty of time for people to ask questions and for discussions to be held. I do want to be clear that I am in favor of caps, so I don't mislead anybody. And I'm also a big believer in the representative democratic process. So if this doesn't work, then there's always ballot initiatives. But I prefer, I prefer this works for the reasons that you and Holly have articulated.
So. One point to the economic study and CJ, I I hear you. We do, I guess, there are two points, one that Steve just made, which is the change will be so gradual. I mean, you know, like maybe three licenses per neighborhood a year, if that.
Don't know.
Well, I mean, you can kind of look at home sales.
This is what they may change based upon those rules.
So what's interesting, though, I will say, is having talked to, personally talked to Charlevois, Suttons Bay, East Bay Township, and one other I'm not thinking of right now. The data and and then talking also some with South Haven, which is a little bit different, but none of those communities have been economically disadvantaged. And I know there are differences, but you know, Suttons Bay is really not very different than Sagatuck. It's about the same population, they're 15 miles from, you know, we're 15 miles from Holland, they're 15 miles from Traverse City with hotels.
Suttons Bay, Suttons Bay is nice. It's a nice, says winery love there. It doesn't have a downtown like we have.
It.
And that's what will be impacted. I like going there because I get away.
Agree to disagree. I mean, you know, we'll do what we decide to do, but I don't think we need to invest a lot of money to get, if the change is so gradual, it's not like we're flipping a switch.
Then what's afraid of the economic study?
I'm not afraid of, I'm not afraid of it. It's just, so South Haven spent $25,000 on their study, and it took six months to do. I mean, after being, I mean, I just think it's a lot of money and a lot of time for a lot of speculative data, rather than looking at what's actually happened in communities.
We've spent a year to get the numbers in spots, and we're still fighting about what that is. So it's, it does take time to get the data.
One of the things that happens with the economic study is it probably is more beneficial if you were having it done, if you can give them some guidelines of saying, here's where we are today, what would happen in their opinion if we had a 10% reduction in.
How do you measure that, Steve?
You can't, I know, because.
Control groups.
I I totally agree. That's where I'm, I'm like, I read some of those studies and I look at it and I say, well, they can say, based upon this, this is what the average tourist, you know, brings in. And here's the average number of, you know, nights that they have within the short-term rental. But I'm like, well, how do you factor in that if it wasn't a short-term rental and there was a family that was living there and they had guests that came on weekends? And with the same number of people still come into town? I mean, there's all these different things you have to kind of factor, which could be part of the study. So I'm not opposed to it, but I think it's first, you know, if we're going to go further, we've got to identify what are we, you know, what we're going to, what are we calling? Is it a zone or a neighborhood? And what are they? And then what is the density within? And what are the issues within those areas? And then our last step would be to talk about, do we want to make a recommended change? And if we want to make a recommended change and we did it strong enough, then we may have to say, we've got to hold off, or council may say, before we take this up, we need an economic study, you know, done. So I, you know, I'm not saying that I'm 100% opposed until we know where it's going. You know, I've heard some, you know, numbers floating around out there that I would say personally, where I was hearing, like, you know, potentially single digits in some neighborhoods. I said, if it was that dramatic over time, I would say yes. I think then somebody needs to have a study to inform people of what the impact would be if we went something that drastic from where we are today. But, you know, so it kind of depends on where we would end up, but we can't talk about where we're going to end up until we define where we are now and where, you know, what they, again, what are the numbers? Before you can really get to that that type of conversation. But I do get a consensus that we would like to kind of proceed. So since that appears to be something that we're, majority are in favor of, then I'd like to just kind of turn back to what David has prepared. Go ahead.
Hey, can we ask Ryan? So from an administrative perspective, would doing something by Hey, can we ask Ryan? So from an administrative perspective, would doing something by neighborhood be more difficult to manage than something by zone? Just, just from a, how you would, I'm assuming not, but it might be, so.
It probably is going to depend in the end on maybe the, I mean, the, how you might cap something if you were to do like spatial distances between or something like that, that might take like some extra steps every time somebody were to apply and, and have to kind of constantly evaluate maps versus having a mapped area and you kind of know, you know, we can look and see the addresses. I mean, that's not terribly, you know, difficult to do. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the comments related to data. Trust me, I think Dave and I both, we want to make sure that you're getting good, accurate information. I think we certainly want folks to trust in the process. I think it's just a matter of, some of this is, is how you look at the issue and what should or shouldn't be included. So Steve, I do want to add on to my comments earlier, you asked about what was missing. So commercial districts, we talked about like multifamily, we talked about situations where there's an ADU and a single-family dwelling may be counted as one. This is also just R1 districts. So the Lake Street zoning district, which has quite a few, as well as the R4 CER districts, you know, also has, you know.
Was one of his areas that's in here.
It was.
Area eleven is in here and it says it has twelve.
Okay. Well, then I'm mistaken then. I thought, my understanding from Dave was that it was just R1, but.
So I think one, that was actually one question.
There are the R4s because Spear Street is, I believe.
If, if we're going by neighborhood rather than by zone, just as a, for example, Park Street South where I live, leaves out five fifteen park that has two STRs and Waterside Suites, which it's a PUD, so that's anyway, but I guess my point just being, putting the PUD point aside, we left them out because they're across the street from residences and technically fall into the, I think it's like the C4 Resort Marina District. So, but, but if we're going by neighborhoods, it didn't necessarily make sense to me to say, okay, we're going by a neighborhood if we're excluding SGRs right across the street from the neighborhood. We're going by neighborhood instead of the zone. So that's a more holistic view, I think.
So yeah, so one looks like, you know, I'm mistaken. I thought this was just our ones. My apologies there. To your point, I mean, that's exactly what this discussion, I think, is about tonight. Like, do you want to either define these areas or neighborhoods differently? Do you want to just go based on zoning district? I think there's a lot, you know, and Dave can kind of speak to this, you know, the pros and cons of looking at it, I think, in, in those different ways. I think the other piece to think about when you're thinking about data, again, yeah, are we including multifamily or not? I think the other piece that comes up, like, do we include vacant parcels that don't have any residential units and, and considering, or do we only include, you know, existing improved parcels that actually are eligible today to be a, a short-term rental? These are all these considerations that we would need your feedback from, so we can get you the level of detail and data that you need and we'll do it. Just need your guidance. So.
Yeah, because I looked at, and just some of my initial thoughts. I look at the, what he calls area one, two, and three, which is Manchester Campbell, Park Street South, Park Perryman, and then two, three, and four, I'm sorry. And then four, which is the Park Street North, which is basically, these are all the, all the peninsula, you know, neighborhoods. I kind of felt that areas two, three, and four, which really is like the Peninsula North and Peninsula South, are similar enough that I would call them all one area myself. I do think that in Peninsula, on the Peninsula side, what he's defined as the Manchester Campbell has a very different residential feel than the areas two, three, and four, because those primarily are all going along Park Street. And since there's, I mean, there is differences, David and I do appreciate the differences you pointed out on the median lot sizes, the average lot size and kind of trying to identify and break them out that way. But at least, you know, I'm open to the thoughts of it. But when I looked at what I consider kind of a neighborhood, I think most people who live along Park Street kind of consider from Campbell North, that's all kind of like the Park Street neighborhood. And therefore I would kind of view that. And I also did the numbers. And if you looked at the number of parcels that, if you add them all up, there's like a hundred and twenty parcels in those three areas as he's defined. There's sixteen, based on his report, short-term rentals in there. It could be a few more, I know, as we start to look at it. Which course that about fourteen percent penetration. And if you look at each of them individually, they're right around thirteen, fourteen. So grouping it together reduces a number if we are looking at neighborhoods. And I think there's a lot of similarity to those type of homes when we look at the Peninsula side anyway. So just to kind of kick it off, I was thinking if I was going to focus on the Peninsula side first, you know, what's everybody's feelings that if you had like the Manchester Campbell and then all the Park ones kind of grouped together, or should we just kind of view everything in the Peninsula underneath one?
I defer to Ann on Park Street because I, I don't live on Park Street or, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm a Manchester Campbell expert, but.
I actually, so I agree Manchester Campbell is separate and I, I suggested that to Ryan when we were getting feedback on neighborhoods. And I, I like that on Park, we included Vine Street and the Sugar Hill condos and Frederick in there because that does feel like more like Park Street than it's in, it's in the Manchester zone, actually. So I like that. I actually do, so my personal feeling is I feel like Park Perryman, I would have included two and three together and that's what I suggested because they feel like the same neighborhood. Perryman doesn't feel like such a dividing line. I, I feel like because of Mount Baldy, Park Street North, and I guess I, the lots aren't that bigger. I guess I would have thought in my head that they were much bigger. They're not looking at the size, I think of them as bigger lots and sort of more spread out and a little bit different. But, but I will say I did, I did actually run this by Jane because I wanted another opinion of another Park Street resident and she shared the view that of kind of more a view of it is a all one neighborhood. So I could kind of go either way, but I definitely.
And I kind of see, if you look at the average lot size, like between Park Street, as he's got area two, Park Street South and Park Street North, it's like point four is your average lot size versus point.
Oh, yeah. I guess it is.
You know, it's.
Yeah, I guess it is.
To your point, I do think I would, if I'm doing a neighborhood, then the C4, the resort also gets factored into it because if they have any licenses or homes that are located within that.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be at that point. It's not a carve-out for residential only. It's, we're going to look at it as a neighborhood.
Right. Yeah.
And then we put those back in. I think that that would be, it makes sense and virtually in any of the areas that we're looking at.
Yeah.
As a group, we've been talking about, we have so many districts, what are we doing? And now we're talking about even splitting up into finer little divisions. So I'm all for having talked about the resident, the districts or bigger groups rather than smaller little divisions. You know, you just, why divide smaller than?
Oh, I wasn't suggesting, I was.
Going here is, you know, a small neighbor. I'm like, man, you're getting really.
I was saying that I would put two and three together for sure. Yeah.
Then the whole district, so.
And as I said, if you take one, two, three, and four, it's basically taken all the peninsula, but currently the peninsula is four zones.
Yeah.
So if we were looking at it, you know, via zones, the difference is what's considered Peninsula West takes everything on the west side of Park Street all the way over. And I think that the Park Street has a very different feel. And to Ann's point, when you put in that, the Sugar Hill and some of the stuff that you access off of Park Street, which is actually in Peninsula West, that's more of it, they're more affected by the Park Street neighborhood because that's how they get to their homes. And so, you know, to me, it's like, I could say, okay, if we want to look at it overall, I can look at the entire peninsula. I'd just say, hey, the peninsula is all one area and it's all four zones. Or I can say it's, instead of having four zones or just one, I could break it into two because I can make the argument that the Manchester and Campbell have a distinctly different feel that everything that's along Park Street and that goes off of it. So if I was going to divide it, I'd divide it into two neighborhoods, not four.
I, 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 I get CJ's.
You too.
Well, so the other thing I think we have to ask is from a, just a regular citizen's point of view. I don't want to confuse people. I mean, so for, you know, getting some things, they have to know what zone they're in. And then for short-term rentals, they have to know what neighborhood they're in. I, I don't know what scenarios that would be, but I mean, I, so is there, I, I'm just concerned that we don't, like CJ said, overcomplicate things for people, although I do think.
Well, and this kind of, again, I was going to overlap with one of the topics that I was wanting to discuss for our twenty-four, is should we be looking at our zoning and whether or not we should have some remapping? Because again, just like we're talking about now, when I've got, I'm just using Peninsula because that's the easiest one to kind of discuss initially. You know, where we've got Peninsula North, Peninsula South, Resort and Peninsula West, and we'd use streets as the dividing line, should we actually be looking and say, no, if we're going to have Peninsula West, should that just be what's in here as the Manchester Campbell? And then should we just have a Peninsula East, which is everything along Park Street? And, you know, does that make sense? That's a lot of work, I know, on behalf of us as well as Ryan.
Ryan.
And look at what are the differences between what's allowed, what's not allowed, and how do you reconcile? But that would be a, a thing that I would think as we move forward, if we're saying that we would like to have this be more zone-based, we could still move forward and look at it as neighborhoods, but that may be the next step is do we remap based upon what we now are considering neighborhoods? And it's going to be the same thing when we now move over to the community residential. You know, that's our largest zone. And let me tell you, it's very different feel between the north and the south end versus the central and the hill part of, of that zone. Is that, do we have it properly zoned? I, you know, I don't know the answer there yet. My feeling is it needs to be remapped. And that they need to be more reflective of really what the character of the neighborhood is versus, I don't know how it was drawn initially. But that would be, go ahead.
We're going to undertake that. It's like, what do we do first? I, I'm like.
Our goals. We should do our roles first.
Right. I mean, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. And in fact, just from a marketing point of view, I would rather think of zones as neighborhoods. But if we're going to go through all of that work, and I'm saying, I think it's probably timely that we do all of that work. It's like, so which comes first?
My concern with, and again, we're having, almost having both conversations here, but this is a kind of an open informal meeting. We didn't have a true agenda item, so it was a question as to where we put things. If, if we weren't underneath a feeling that there's a sense in the community that we haven't finished the short-term rental.
Right.
And that there is a need for us to at least move forward with, are we going to make a recommendation? I would first say, let's look at the neighborhoods and do the remapping. But knowing that that could take us the majority of the rest of the summer, we're now getting into the point to where by then, is there already a ballot initiative in the works? Is there, you know, elections being affected? And I, so then I say, well, I'd rather move forward, at least trying to get to the point of would we want to recommend, you know, any type of limits or caps? And if so, do we want to do them by neighborhood and let that thing kind of be a guideline for the need to go back and remap so that we could have them in alignment? So as CJ was saying, and Anderson, and we probably all agree that somebody doesn't feel like, okay, I'm in this zone, but I'm in this neighborhood for short-term rental. And it is going to become an issue because somebody could say, well, you've drawn the neighborhoods, you know, based upon your own personal preference, are you, you know, we're biased versus if it truly is its own zone and we have reasons as to why it was set as its own zone, then I think it's, you know, it's probably easier. But I don't know. I feel that we have to move, unfortunately, we have to kind of move forward with the one because of the timing of the community and that it falls within, it's something we started in two thousand and twenty-three. Other thoughts?
I, I agree, Steve. I kind of think we should knock this out. And, and if, if maybe, maybe it's sounding like maybe the starting point is to shorten the, try to, try to consolidate some of the neighborhoods and then that's maybe a building block for zones down the line.
And I think it's, and like I tried to do when I was looking at it, and again, I'm just taking advantage of throwing my points off first, but everybody else can kind of jump in. You know, when I was talking about like two, three, and four being merged together, so it's all Park Street. One, I thought they were similar enough. And when I looked at the number of parcels versus the number of short-term rentals, it didn't change it dramatically. It wasn't like by combining them, all of a sudden you went from one of them having twenty-eight percent to now they'll have like sixteen. They were all still, came out about fourteen. You know, when I looked at, you know, moving on, and if we were going forward, I was looking at Maple Street, and I started thinking that really part of, and this is where we can help David in some guidelines, but I thought that part of area nine, which is the Mason Alagan, that butts up against Maple Street could actually be included in that one, as well as the area twelve, which is kind of the south end and the bridge. Maple Street could have all of that. And when I put them together, if you look through each of them, they're right around about a, you know, that twenty percent range with a few exceptions. But if I was merging those four districts together, five, nine, ten, and twelve, you get like a hundred and thirty properties and twenty-nine, you know, twenty-nine to thirty-three short-term rentals, which puts you about twenty-two percent. So again, it's, it keeps everything within a range. And these are all things that could kind of be discussed, but to try to like reduce down, if it's Long Maple, then it's just like with Park. It's kind of, they're more of a residential feel than if we are, and I know like when I, on item nine, the Mason Alagan, there, you know, if I was going to be helping David, I was kind of, I think the the, like the first three between Maple and like East and all of the parcels that are along Alagan would get become kind of like part of the Maple Street, but yet when you get from East Street over, that really is probably more like the hill in my, but my opinion. You know, so it would be just a matter of, you know, kind of moving some of the boundaries so that we're looking at what really you feel is more, you know, consistent. And that was just, you know, some thoughts as I was trying to look at and try to figure out, how can I get like two on the east at the maximum, I mean, two on the west side, and then trying to get it down to only three or four on the east side. And I thought we could, my mind, I could easily consolidate five, nine, ten, and twelve, with the exception of those that are in nine, that are east of east. I mean, west of East Street would then go into the hill. And then keeping the hill in the central, I thought really are very, very unique and would be very hard to try to merge away in the Holland corridor. You know, I could go either way, kind of when I got into, for me, I'm a six, seven, and eight, I think it was. Where's my eight? Is eight the hill?
Yes, six is Holland corridor.
So it's, and I guess it becomes that question of.
Nine and ten, you know, because I like your talk, when you talk about how it's like communities, not necessarily when you start talking about that the STR levels are the same, because I feel like zoning because of what STRs is a bad plan, but like communities is a good.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want anybody accusing that I was looking at and saying, well, if we group this one in, it's no longer, it's, it changed their number to where they're either higher or lower.
Right.
I almost want to group them without knowing the numbers.
But at the same time.
Mr. Anti-Gerrymander. I love that.
But when I started looking at, you know, like the hill, and again, it was, it was more of just kind of bringing that line from like West Street and taking that on down to Alagan and including those western ends of that one area into the hill. And then, you know, the whole central, I mean, those homes, I mean, some of that, it's in what we call, what he's got the central district. It, you know, once again, we're kind of overlapping because we have the, the CER district, which is the commercial. Always forget what it's, what's, what's CER?
It's a trend.
It's our commercial transition. I know there's a special, we got a name there, but and as we transition from the center residential, the CER R4 over to the R1, you know, that area that we've got here on area seven, kind of includes. over to the R1, you know, that area that we've got here on Area Seven, kind of includes a little bit of both. So again, that, that remapping. You know, I do kind of feel like what's here, a lot of this is more of that community residential. But yet, our community residential, our CER cuts off about halfway through that area. You know, so it's, but I'm okay with kind of looking at the central, you know, myself as like its own little zone, because I think it has a different feel. Although I could say group it with the hill. You know, it's, um, and again, by grouping it with the hill, I'm not changing the number, the number of parcels dramatically.
There was a little bit that's left of Water Street North right there as well.
I know, we got to get rid of that too. I know. But that's commercial. So it's something where, but if we are going to put the neighborhood, I think the whole, but that's where it gets back to the point. If it's going to be a neighborhood base, then you've got to include everything.
That's right.
So a, a question is whether we think i- i- if in a cap discussion, whether the, we're contemplating sort of a a sing, you know, a single percentage rate across all of these, then we should just stick with the zones and then get to the neighborhoods later. If we are thinking, no, some, you know, the, it would be okay to leave the hill at, you know, whatever percent, but in, you know, Manchester Campbell, we want it to be something else. I do, because if, if we kind of think, let's just go with 20% or whatever percent that is, then this is probably a better discussion around zones. And I don't know how, if people in their own minds have a sense of whether they see different cap levels, assuming people believe there should be a cap. So I, I saw that, if people have a sense of that, that might make this easier. And then the other thing I think we should consider, and again, either way is fine, but one level makes it really easy for everybody to just say it's, you know, whatever percent or, or number that's roughly equivalent to that. Which is not to say just because it's simpler, we should go with it. But that might help this discussion if we all have a gut sense of, no, we think different neighborhoods, would we require different cap levels?
I guess, I'll jump in to kind of speak to that. Because our community residential is such a large zone, and it includes the hill as well as the northern section and the southern section. My initial thought was, let's just have one number and make it, you know, per, per zone. However, when I start to look at the areas that we've kind of defined, and the people who live up on the hill and hearing their constant complaint, and I see that we've got a 40% plus in the hill, we've got a 40, just in the residential part of the central, we're at 40% plus. That to be, should be, you know, it's based upon everything we saw on the task force and other communities, that's, it's a very large number. But then if I group it, when I was putting them all together, but if I do a whole zone, I dilute down how concentrated it is in those two neighborhoods. So it's hard to say I'm just going to make it per the zone. Because then all of a sudden, I'm not looking at anything that's got a 40%. I'm looking at something that's back in the twenties.
Right. But if we say, gosh, let's look at our neighborhoods, walking in the different neighborhoods. How many short-term rentals do I want to see in our neighborhoods? Does that really change neighborhood to neighborhood? For me, it doesn't really. I mean, I personally, because we all know I support caps, I think anything over 20% feels too high. And so this is really interesting. And I totally support however, I mean, I, I, I love this discussion.
Right.
But for me, it's sort of like, great, I still think anything more than 20% is too high. And given that it's going to take us years, I mean, on the hill, decades likely to get to that. I mean, why not, we could make it simpler and then get to zoning that makes sense for zone. I, I worry about short-term rentals driving this zoning discussion, or kind of getting our thinking into zoning.
Holly, you raise a point that kind of goes to something I've been thinking about as I've been thinking about the data, which is kind of the end game to your point. Because something that I've been thinking about, when I look at the numbers in my neighborhood, is I think, gosh, okay, maybe it's a lower number than the hill. But I can point to five, 10 properties in the immediate proximity that I know in 10 to 20 years, maybe even less will be turning over. And so it's sort of like, well, is that really not a problem just because the numbers are lower? No, maybe we need to be kind of thinking about, maybe the numbers don't matter in a situation like that. Maybe it's more, to your point. What do we think it's comfortable? What do we want it to look like? Yeah.
Whatever my great-grandkids going to come and say, well, why did they zone it that way? And they're going to say, why did great-grandpa do that? It's not the way it is anymore. Like we did on the waterfront, the way the zoning is, didn't necessarily reflect, it was what was there at the time, not a overall new in that area. And we just made a change it.
Yeah. I think, at least I'm just speaking, because I know I've heard your point. When I look at the areas where we have the highest level of concentration, the central and the hill, which again, was kind of been identified by David, and I, my guess is we really get into numbers if we start looking at it specifically on the number of houses versus properties. And we add in, you know, these multis that seem probably going to be potentially even a little higher. But they, in my, my opinion, like the central and the hill are kind of more like downtown. And I do believe that there, I could justify a higher number there that I could justify in the Maple or in like Manchester or even Park. So it's hard to be able to say that I would want the same across the city. Somebody might, you know, the conversation of 20%. But if I was going from a 40% penetration in a neighborhood, is, and we said, okay, over time, it's, it's going to become 20. Then I do get back to the point of, okay, now what is, what is the impact economically if you reduce the number of short-term rentals over the next five or 10 years or even longer by 50%? It's a, that's a dramatic change. Plus I have to think, what's the likelihood that that will ever get passed? If I, if we made something that dramatic of, you know, looking at it. So I'm just trying to think of what can make sense without it, you're moving forward and you're kind of saying, hey, we're not going to have a moratorium or anything, but we have a 30% or 35% in these neighborhoods. Bottom line is you can't issue any new short-term rental. You know, at least it's, it's a starting point, and it may have less pushback than if we said, okay, we're just going to make it 20% everywhere. That's, I'm thinking of it more in stages as to how you move it forward.
Yeah, with, with, with all due respect, I think one of the concerns I can see with that, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense, but I think one of the objections you're going to hear, especially since I hear it a lot, I live in, on the hill and I hear it from my neighbors. Wait, you're telling me that my, where I live has to have a higher cap because I'm closer, because it feels more like a commercial district when the city, because they didn't put any restrictions in place upfront, essentially forced my neighborhood that I've invested in now to become a commercial district. I don't, I don't think that's going to fly very well. It doesn't fly with me anyway.
Yeah.
I, you know, which to me goes back to, you know, almost, I think where you were going, Holly, it's, I mean, we, we've got these different dimensions, right? We've got time. We have the risk that a valid initiative to, to use the, the, what came out in the last council meeting, Councilmember Dean, I believe, said, you know, that we run the risk of a sledgehammer approach coming at us. I think that needs to get into, you know, factored into how quickly we try and push things forward, because it could damage the town if it's draconian, right? So I think we've, you know, you know, from my perspective, simpler is better. The idea, I mean, I love the idea of redistricting. If I were doing things, I've, knowing that we have a time window in front, I'd say, let's, let's push that to after. Let's figure out, what do we mean by caps? Are we talking about percentages? Are we talking about a distance between? So you don't have too many geolocation between, I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can implement caps, right?
Right.
What, what are our, what are our stakeholders telling us?
I mean, it's, obviously, we know this is a conversation that had been pushed for years because there is, just as we're discussing here, and as we did for almost eight months with the, the task force, there's so many different ways of looking at it. Because then you could, you know, if we are going to be moving forward, once we get ready, just if, first, we got to decide how we're going to look at the data. So again, is it neighborhoods or zones? Then we have to kind of determine, is it every STR going to be viewed the same? You know, right now, a license is a license. You know, some cities have said, hey, if it's a full-time resident and they're only renting their home once or twice, you know, per year, then that is, you know, that's a different type of license versus some, you know, someone who is like an LLC that's bought it as a business. You know, so if we were looking at it, if we made a decision, we wanted to do that, then that requires more of a breakdown of what type of licenses do we have? Do we even have the ability? Does Grinck and Granicus tell us, are they renting it every week, or are they only putting it up twice a year? You know, and again, I don't know what everybody's feeling is, but that would have to be discussed when you start talking about, you know, caps of that. So I think what we're trying to do tonight is, you know, do we want it by neighborhood? And if so, do we want to try to identify what the neighborhoods are so that David and Ryan have a direction to go? Or do we just want to say, hey, we're going to work with the zones the way they are? Or not even zones, do we just want to say, okay, we're going to, we want to look at everything as residential? And there's no difference if you live in the hill, or if you live on Park Street, or if you live on Manchester, if you live on Maple. I personally think there is a difference. And I know that you, you bought on the hill, but I have to think, most people bought on the hill knew that they were buying into an area that is located closer to the downtown, and the ones who have purchased in the last five or 10 years knew it was a heavier concentration. Maybe they didn't expect it to become close to 40 or 50%. But in my, my mind, out of all the years I was coming here, I always knew that that's where you, most of the rentals existed. That's where I would go and rent when I would come into town. But I didn't expect it to be over on Maple, or I didn't expect it to be down on Bridge or over, you know, in, in like, you know, Manchester, you know, where it was truly a residential. But that's just my view. So I, I personally think I can see a difference between the average owner in certain neighborhoods, because there's a lot of, lot of percentage of the people who are up on the hill, or in, it's what we call the central, purchased because they had the intention of using it part-time and then renting it. And so it's, whether that's good or bad, it just means that, you know, they, they did purchase with, you know, kind of that expectation. And I have to factor that in.
As planners though, I think we need to think about our neighborhoods. I mean, I get what you're saying. But we're charged as the planning commission with looking at the city. And our neighborhoods, our business districts, you know, how we zone, you know, the waterfront, great work. It's like, how do we want the waterfront work? I see this as, how do we want our neighborhoods? And the hill is a neighborhood. And I think long-term for the health of our neighborhoods, even if one would expect there to be more short-term rentals on the hills, that doesn't mean that that's what we should want that neighborhood to be.
My feeling, and I get everybody else's expression, is that the hill is a feeder to our business district, much more so than some of the other neighborhoods are. And as planners, yes, I got to think about where I want our neighborhoods to be, but I have to think about the entire city. And I do have to think about what is the impact if I was to reduce down the number that dramatically in a neighborhood that is really just surrounds the downtown.
But if, if we do it grandfathered over time, it will be, I mean, seriously, I think on the hill, if we went from 40 to 20%, I, I, I think it would be at least 15 years, if not more. If we see, I mean, that's plenty of time for us to fine-tune. But it tells our neighbors that we heard them and that turning over a fifth of their neighborhood to transient lodging, we think is a good trade-off, because this is a tourist community and we, that's really critical to our economy. But I think giving over more than 20% of your homes that were built as homes in neighborhoods to commerce, I, I think that's the wrong decision. And what's great is if I'm wrong, we'll see that and we can change it. But what we aren't going to get is another bite at this apple. I mean, this is the time for Saga Talk to deal with this. I mean, it's not, I mean, I think the city would go ape-shit if we tried to come back to, you know, I mean, we aren't going to change it once we make this decision. I think this is our time.
And, and I think you're going to have a pretty good argument coming at you if you go to, if we start singling out areas and say, you're too close to town, so, you know, we're changing the rules on the people that have chosen to live there. I, I really think that that's some, might be a hard pill to swallow for certainly myself, and I know for all of the neighbors who've come and shared.
I, we're kind of getting the card ahead of it because we're already talking about percentages, which would be the last part of this conversation.
I wasn't going to percentages.
My only thought was, again, when I think of the hill, the reason, I'm just trying to say, well, I thought if there was to be a differential, would, and I hear what Holly say, you only get one slice at it, but I'm just throwing out, since we're using like numbers. Okay, if you got a 40% concentration in a neighborhood and you said, okay, we're going to set it at 30, well, at least at that point, you can see, how long did it take us to have 10% of them, you know, turn over? You know, it's,
Does anybody have an aspirin or an Advil by chance?
There, there was something that I wanted to, to interject while the, the, the commission is on the topic of looking at neighborhoods versus looking at zoning districts. Just from an execution standpoint, and, and Dave, if you have more creative ideas, feel free to chime in. But I think if we start breaking this into pieces that are smaller than zoning districts, from the standpoint of amending the zoning ordinance, what we're going to wind up with is probably overlay districts.
Correct.
So I, I don't know where that, that plays into the planning commission's deliberations, but from the mechanics of amending the zoning ordinance to, to reflect regulations that are specific to something that is smaller than or different than a zoning district, probably the easiest way to effectuate that would be to establish overlay districts.
I, I wondered too, as we're having this discussion, if maybe we need to kind of think about what we want the data for. If we just wanted to present to residents to support a cap or to, you know, that's one thing, if we want to use it to actually drive different percentages in different neighborhoods, it seems like a different use of it.
Yeah, when we, when, you know, the, the remapping part, I don't look at that and say that I would base any recommendations that I would foresee zoning, remapping different zones based on short-term rental. I was more looking at if we were talking about, like, again, it's always easiest for me to kind of look at Peninsula, because I don't really, I don't really understand the breakdown over there and why those are all zoned the way they are. You know, it's, if they were grouping that into all like one zone or two zones, it just, I would want to look at it and think, well, what is the similarities in drawing the zone line as opposed to using a street? Because again, I don't think, in the past, when they just kind of drew it down a street, in my opinion, was well, one side of the street is not really that different from the other side of the street, you know, in some situations. But many cities do use streets as their borders.
I thought you'd be sure to, you guys are having an excellent discussion and wrestling with a really tough issue and a lot of things. So I know Dave's been shaking his head at different times on certain points, just wondering if, you know, this kind of, as our consulting planner, if he has any, you know, thoughts that have come up that maybe he wants you to make sure and consider as you're continuing your discussion.
I appreciate that.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I think in terms of, of our, our next steps, I think it, it is important just to get the data. And I, I think we can all agree to that. I think some of this, it can be certainly continued in terms of, of the appropriate neighborhoods and boundaries. But, you know, when I'm looking at the data, you know, I think we need to ensure that we have all the addresses, have, have the numbers. You know, break down short-term rentals by, by dwelling type, whether it's multifamily, townhouse, single-family detached or ADU. Once we have all this data and we, you know, build this in, in GIS, you know, we'll, we'll really be able to manipulate neighborhood boundaries any way we want and, and crank out any sort of data you need based on, on, on those neighborhood boundaries. So I think if we could first, I think internally, focus on, on getting the data, working with the mapping folks, getting the addresses, getting us all in. So I think if we could first, I think internally focus on, on getting the data, working with the mapping folks, getting the addresses, getting us all on the same page in terms of, of, you know, what we have available to us from, from city data versus Mr. Baldwin's data versus Granicus versus the McKenna report. I think we can first jump on that. Um, I think the, the conversations of neighborhoods, um, I, I, you know, I do think that we could, uh, regulate by neighborhood for short-term rental purposes. And then I think this, this really, really does play into the issue of, of our, our, our one districts and re-designate them. I, I, I think that is a separate project though, for sure. But I think this is the same general type of, of analysis we would do i- in a zoning audit of, of your residential districts. I mean, we're looking at, at natural neighborhoods, we're looking at, at, you know, are these all commonly, you know, you, a quarter acre size lots, um, versus this other neighborhood in a different area? So we're, we're looking at common characteristics of neighborhoods in, which could become zoned. So I think this is an interesting conversation for, for short-term rental purposes, but I think it does, it's going to be a very common, uh, well, very appropriate in probably a similar conversation when we look, reassess the R districts as well. So, um, but I think, I think the first thing we do is just make sure that we have the data, get you the numbers. Uh, I think we, based on tonight, we probably can narrow this down to, to eight or so neighborhoods. Um, I, so I was taking notes on, on how these neighborhoods can either be combined or shifted, uh, and then come back, uh, at the next meeting with, with that more detailed analysis.
Yeah. I think if we get the data, that, that, that's a huge point because then you at least say, okay, what are we overall? And, you know, so if you were looking at something, could you make a recommendation as an overall? Or then if it, then we could break it down by zone and we could look at, does it make sense in that zone? And then we can then take the next step and say, should we look at neighborhoods? Because maybe the way the current zone is, the impact of some of the neighbors, because again, my concern, when I thought of it just by zones is when I look at community residential, which includes the hill, but not most of the center, when I, if I put all the other parts to it, the Holland, the bridge, the paramens, not paramount, but the pleasant, I reduce down that density dramatically. So I'm no longer looking at a 40% in that neighborhood, I'm down to like 25%, which again, still means that a 20% cap. But it's, it's, you, you, you don't get the same feel for how dense it is in a couple of parts of that zone. You know, when I look at the other zones, I'm like, it doesn't really make that big of a difference whether it's a neighborhood or an area. Because as I was, as I was kind of doing the numbers, it didn't change that much. If I looked at all of Peninsula versus four different parts of Peninsula. If I look at everything along Maple, if I book them all into different areas, like it is now, or I group them all together, it didn't change that dramatically. The characteristics for the makeup, but when it comes to the central and the, um, potential community, it does make a difference when you start to, the more you put into that. So it's, but I guess
We can show.
As we try to move forward with whether or not we should have more discussion and have David work on neighborhoods. What is the consensus? What's, is my feeling, would they rather look at this more by zone? And talk about having something that goes across like all our ones or all our threes, regardless of where they're located? Because if that's the case, that I don't need to have, I wouldn't recommend to David or Ryan that they spend the time defining a neighborhood. If we think it's best to do it by a complete zone, then we, all we need to do is just get the data. But obviously getting the data is our first step.
Right. Cause Dave just said, once we have the data and it's on GIS, he can
Move it around. Yep.
So.
So at a minimum, we know that we want to get the data and then we can move this conversation. So between now and when we get the data, think about, do we want it to be by a zone or more of a neighborhood? And that's where we'll move that discussion.
One thing I do think would be helpful, and maybe we just capture the data both ways, but I, and what we got here, we were counting, um, lots or parcels versus dwelling units. And I know CJ and I have different point of view on this, which probably doesn't surprise either of us. But, um, when I walk around my neighborhood, I don't, I don't, I think of the houses, I don't think of the lot. I mean, there are a couple of double lots in the neighborhood, but I don't think of them as, oh, well, there could be another house there. I, I mean, it's, if somebody built there, then I would, you know, include it in, but I don't include when I count houses, you know, when I look at my neighborhood, I don't count them, the double lots.
Yeah, that's a good point, Holly. And the other thing that I know Craig pointed out in his letter was vacant lots were included, which we have certainly at least one or two on Park Street.
Right. So, and maybe until we decide, I mean, at some point we're going to have to decide how we're going to count it. You know, we can either take a quick, you know, see where people are, if they're ready to say, or maybe we can capture at least both sets of numbers so that we have that.
So I guess David is the question to, can we have a number of lots, but then how many of them are actually built on? So if we could, if, if, if it's possible that we could have both numbers, you know, to the point of the lots, cause I, I go back and forth too. But I keep thinking, if we're trying to simplify this for down the road, if we were, if you had a, say you had a limit on how many, instead of saying 20%, if, if we made a decision that you can only have X number of licenses.
Right.
If you have an X number of licenses, then I'm fine with only considering houses or, you know, excluding lots. If we have it as a percentage, then I'm like, well, what if I'm at that percentage and I didn't include a lot, but somebody builds a house on that lot and they want to get a short-term rental license? Now I've got one more lot, but I've also got one more short-term rental. Does that change? It changes the percentage of what my existing are. So it's, it's a moving target if I'm only looking at buildable. If I'm looking at lots, the number of lots is not going to change. The number of, that have been built upon can change over time. So if I'm looking for something static, I base it on lots.
I think how other communities have done it is they sort of get the percent they're looking for, and then what's the number? And then they put the number in and then, you know, if an area, it's easier to adjust the number if you need to.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah. To me, it's, it's, my recommendation would be, it's a, that's why I always use the word limit as opposed to a cap. It's like, it's limited to this many, if you were moving forward. Yes, you use a percentage to kind of get there, but it's a limit. So that way we don't have to worry that down the road, if a house gets built, now all of a sudden I'm at 21% versus 19. You know, the house gets built, wants to put in a short-term or three houses get built and they don't do short-term rental. Now all of a sudden I'm below the 20. It's like, no, you're still not below the, the limit that we had for that area. Yeah. So.
Okay.
The math of densities to me is pretty clear. It's a hundred percent. So it's everything. When I breathe air, it's 25% oxygen, which I need, the rest of it is, so I think all of that space, so density is a hundred percent. You have to get to eventually. So by eliminating things, you're not doing math properly. As a.
Right. Yeah. Like I said, to me, the, you know, again, this is everybody's different feeling. I just feel that the number, the number of lots has less likelihood of changing over time versus the number of homes that have been built. And even like in our neighborhood, it's like, how would I go from, they tore a house down and it's now a vacant lot? But there was a house there. So previously that would have been counted, but now it's not counted. You know, it's, um,
But Chad has a double lot too. Actually the, the Pascal's have three lot.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, it, but it's, you know, it's, but what do we count? We count the houses.
Yeah. I agree.
Definitely, it's worthy of trying to see if we can get the breakdown. I just, you know, if we had a consensus that we were doing it on lots, I would tell David not to worry about trying to identify the number of.
So is that a big lift, David, to, to provide the number of houses in addition to the lots?
I, I, I mean, it's certainly a more significant, but we should be able to, uh, you pull the, uh, the, the assessor's data, you know, through GIS and we should be able to do that. I, I, we're, we're definitely going to have, have a couple of conversations with, with our, our GIS folks to see what we can do. But everything does sound like it's doable and this is information that is available publicly. So it, it should be something that we, we can pull together.
And I do think Mr. Baldwin's list does have like addresses by places where people live. So that might again, be a jumping off point.
So, yeah. I mean, and this, I think they come up through the, the task force process. And, and again, they wrestled with that as well. And again, it's dependent on how you look at it, what should or shouldn't be included in. So we, we did pull, uh, assessing data at that time. And, um, you know, the, the, the data that's in the report doesn't include residential vacant parcels. It just included residential approved, which means it has something on it or residential condominiums. So, um, you know, so, I mean, we could pull a, a fresh report. Obviously we've had some homes built since, some, you know, torn down. So Dave's right. I mean, we, we have that data available. It's a it'll be a policy decision on how you view it. And I, I hear two, I've heard two and two so far. I, I don't know where the rest of you stand, but, uh, and I don't think, you know, I, there's valid arguments on both sides of it. So.
Okay. Yeah. I just, before we put the effort in, I just wanted to see if we thought it was, if everyone was thinking a parcel is a parcel, let's just look at a, a number of parcels. Then I would say, don't do the work. But if we think that we need to see the number of the parcels that have actually got homes on them versus, you know, cause I get back like Spring Hill. Okay. I'm like, well, there's, there's 10 parcels over there and they're going to be building homes. But yet they're not built yet. So they were saying that, that we, we wouldn't base any decision on those 10 places, even though we know they're going to be building homes on them.
I think if nothing else, it's important to understand both numbers. Um, so we can then.
Cause then the math doesn't.
If it's.
Homes and we have a percentage of.
Yeah.
And if it's doable and it's not a lot of work, it doesn't curve, I'm just trying to control cost i- if, if necessary.
So wow, wow.
Wow.
Really? Last spot. Good job.
Yeah, we're trying to do that because some, some people have spent a lot of money recently, but, um, any of that, the, um, um, moving on, took a sec. The, so on the short-term rental discussion, then we want to try to get data for how many, where, where, where they are and the plots and the breakdown between residential, multifamily and including the com- the commercial potentially in neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Anything else for moving forward on short-term? You know, is that a, is that a good point for you, David? Are you got enough information to kind of move forward with that?
There's a couple items. Okay.
Sure.
So the other things that are here, I, I really think the number of STR permits and clustering and that part is good. But I felt really arbitrary on whether parking concerns were high or low or noise were high or low. So I'm like, noise, we, we, during the task force, you got a report that had the 75 noise complaints over the last three years. Were those, do we know where those were at, where we could put the, which of those zones? Cause I, you know, I look at some areas and it's okay. And then parking, you know, my, my work apartment's downtown, parking's hard where that's at. But it's obviously your parking concerns are high in some of these because of where they're located. So I'm sort of arbitrary in the concern levels and I'm interested in what, how we want to deal with that.
Yeah. I, I actually wondered if we even need it.
That's what my thinking is too.
I looked at the last two, it was short-term rentals and the clusters.
I, I like parking as a goal for our next topic, but I don't think it should be in this.
Right.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. But at the same time, it was nice to kind of have it identified because as we do put parking on a 24 goal, this starts to identify areas where we think there is probably more of a parking issue. So it helps narrow that down, but for short-term rental, it really doesn't matter, in my opinion.
And, and obviously parking, parking downtown is a high priority. That's, uh, water is wet. That's an obvious thing.
Right. Yeah.
So. Other clarify, I, I remember Commissioner Gott raising parking related to short-term rentals and wanting to evaluate this. So I think that's kind of part of why it's, it's here. And I think there was concern that, that short-term rentals created a higher volume of folks parking, uh, because of their higher occupancy than maybe a traditional single-family home. So, um, so I just want, I just want to make sure everybody, I mean, if, if you don't want to continue to evaluate that at this point, that's fine. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that or there's.
I like having the data. I think where I, and it's fine. Oh, we characterize it. I just, what we choose to call media, and this was less on parking, but more on short-term rental density. When we, I think 20% was considered at, uh, let's see, less than 20% is low and 20% to 30 is medium. For me, 20% to 30 is high. So just how we name, how we characterize what's on short-term rentals. Um, I just quibble with the term. So I, and I don't know for short-term rentals, we need to, because we all have our views of what's small, medium and high. Parking, I do think that, that data though is helpful because I, I think it is, is, I mean, I'm assuming car parking is going to be a priority.
What is the data? How is the data?
Well.
How is it specified for high, medium, low?
It was just a, well, David could probably explain it, but I took it as it was kind of his visual on.
Yeah. How, how did you clarify, clarify high, medium, low for parking?
Uh, generally as it related to the lot size and lot depth. So, I mean, we could certainly, the, the more in, in-depth way to do it is to do a windshield survey or a more, um, you know, block by block review of aerials, just to, to take a look at, you know, the, really the average length of driveways or, or availability of on-street parking or nearby public lots. So, um, I mean, there, there's a couple of different ways to look at parking, but I mean, just for the, the sake of this, this, you know, initial analysis, it was just the, the size and depth of lots.
And I'd have to say that when you look through it, I've kind of felt it, it was very much in line. A lot of my, we had low to medium. I was like, yeah, that's probably is a load of medium concern when I go through the neighborhoods and.
That's why I feel sort of unrelated to STRs.
Yeah, but it's really not. And the noise and activity, which I appreciate he's got in here, I think that I don't want to really factor that in at this point, only because from a noise level, we just passed a whole bunch of new ordinances. So hopefully that's taken care of a lot of, you know, that side of it. So I do think that it comes down to, you know, more of the clustering and the number, the density.
I think that, um, at least based on my experience of living in the hill um, and, um, neighbors and, um, listening to feedback throughout this process, especially as it pertains, I think to Pleasant Street. That, um, during the tourist months, um, and the height of short-term rentals, um, even though there are rules in terms of, um, short-term rentals, where they park, how many parking space, they're not, uh, they're not adhered to. And we just have a ton of parking issues.
I concur. Pleasant Street should be no parking on one side of the road. Those are ruled. There's probably a couple of those. I'm all supportive of that, but I don't think it's a.
My street.
It's just getting, just for the planning commission's purpose, I mean, that is, well, well, one, that was part of the, the task force recommendations. So it was part of the enforcement plan that the council approved. And so our net engineer did an initial analysis and, and, um, the fall related to some streets that were identified for him to, to take a look at. Uh, I actually, uh, waiting on some feedback from, uh, the, the fire chief, uh, related to that list and the recommendations. So, uh, I think you're going to see some movement relatively soon on some of those streets and probably some no parking on one side or the other, uh, relatively soon. So.
So we're in agreement that David will pull together numbers for us for both parcels as well as buildable. We'll break it down initially by zone and then we'll take a look at whether or not we would want to go further into neighborhoods. Like he was saying that once we have the data, we can start moving it around. Is that our good next steps?
Yeah, I think, yeah. And it's citywide data.
Yeah. Citywide data, citywide data. Any questions with that, David, Ryan? Then for this area, we're supposed to be short, medium, like move on to the new business item B, the goals for the remainder of 2024. I will be the first to say, I think that the continued discussion on short-term rental is probably already been determined that that would be one of the items. Ryan, did you want to go through, you, you, you put a recap in here. I don't want to just jump in, but you know, of kind of where we were in 2023 and, um, opening it up.
Well, you know, I, I trust, I shared that everybody probably read it. I, I, I think you, you accomplished many of your, your goals have been completed or at least in, in progress or some that, uh, didn't get to, but that, that's not uncommon. And, and you've had a lot of other heavy lifts. So.
Yeah. When I look at, I'm sure I speak on behalf of all of us, we put a lot of time into the waterfront preservation. We were successful in making that change. There's still parts of it, which I have down on my list for 2024, going back and looking at what remains of Water Street North and Water Street South and trying to determine, you know, should they stay as these little half-block zones? Or should they be merged in, which kind of falls back into that larger picture. I, I just kind of grouped it all underneath, looking at all the commercial zones and determining, you know, do we need each of them? And if so, are we getting, um, what's permitted and not permitted in each of them? Does that make sense? And if, you know, if we got a lot of similarities, can we kind of merge them? And if, you know, if we got a lot of similarities, can we kind of merge them? So it goes back to one of the. Goals in 2023 that we partially did was the consolidation of zoning districts. And, you know, I was, I think it's one of the things I would like to see would be looking at the commercial zones first, because I think in the downtown area, we do need to determine. What you're doing with those two small. Zones. And we also would like to kind of have a, a, take a look at the consistency of what's allowed. In each of the zones as they currently exist within the commercial district. And does that make sense? You know, given where we are, you know, kind of, kind of today. Um, then it also then leads to that next discussion of. If we, after we finish the commercial, do we, would we want to have the discussion on the residential? And does it, you know, do we need all those zones and should it be mapped that way? That may be too much for 2024. That may become a 2025, you know, type of agenda item because we still have work to do. On the short-term as well as the commercial. And then as we heard, parking was on 2023. In a couple of different ways, the parking, you know, fee and Lua parking, and then the overall parking. Um, so on my list, I've, I've got the short-term rental parking, commercial zone priority over the residential. And then I've had several people ask me. With all this discussion we've had recently on the airport property. Why was planning commission not involved whatsoever in making recommendations for how that could potentially be used? And could it be? You know, has anyone looked at it from a standpoint of having affordable housing and trails in that area? I mean, there's a.
So yes, I have. Um, so in terms, so the, and if Dave, Dave is still on the phone, um, so Dave just, um. Presented to the last, um, township board meeting their new zoning ordinances. Um, and the airport property is zoned for, uh, it can, it's like the, the big parcel of it is 152 acres.
Right.
They can do 17 lot splits, um, but the minimum buildable, the minimum lot size is two and a half acres. So from an affordable housing perspective, that's not going to work. Um, so.
And does township get, this is where I'm kind of was confused on. Cause I didn't, I, I put that as like a questionable item, only because I don't know who gets to set the rules.
The township.
Township. Oh, they set the rules for that. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the next one is why, that explains why we're not talking about it.
Yeah.
Take that one. We own it, but we don't get to set the rules for it. Okay.
And if we, if it were to be developed, I mean, one of the reasons why I think, you know, the city's looking at it, if we. Sold it for development, then we, we would get the sale money, obviously, but like all the property taxes and all of that would go to the township. So. Um, interesting.
Interesting.
I, I just will just say, just personally, my reaction when I looked at this and the, your summary was incredibly helpful, Ryan, because I kind of checked off. It was kind of obvious what we've done. I felt like we still had a lot left over. I thought we could just take what's left over plus the caps and we'd still have a very full. Set of goals for 2024. So that might just be an easy way to do it. Just.
Yeah. Well, I think we can take off the Park Street sidewalk because I do believe the public works is.
I don't think that's really being addressed. I think we should keep that on. I don't, I.
I think we, I. I was under the impression that they were actually looking at doing a study on that.
We did a study that was, that kind of went nowhere. The city commissioned a study in 2017 or 18. It went nowhere. Um, I think it would be worth us looking at. No one ever looked at it. It was actually a great study. The price points are probably all. Completely dated at this point, but as what I've heard, um, having sat on the subcommittee with Ruth for Parks and Public Works Committee. Is that, um, there's, there's, you know, going to be a little bit of tinkering at the margins in terms of putting up maybe a crosswalk or stop sign or two, but not a really a meaningful. Change of any kind to the corridor, which I think is what we were envisioning here is kind of addressing. The fact that it's a death trap right now.
Yes.
For pedestrians.
I like a lot of the other conversations. It's so complicated because of the nature of it. I'm like, well, can we get some of the other things done? I, I agree with you. Trust me, I agree with you. But I'm more of like, well, I do think that's more of a public works. And we can make recommendations, but.
Public Works though is really going to address, like the report, if you look at the report, which I'm, I'm sure you've seen Ryan, but I, I mean, I can pull it and send it around to ever, or to you to distribute it. But. I mean, the report we hired twice. I don't remember. Yes. And we, and they came up with three recommendations for, you know, different approaches for really meaningfully addressing. The corridor sidewalks, et cetera, all those issues. And I, I could be wrong, but I don't think Parks and Public Works would be. Involved at all with kind of a policy decision about. Taking a direction with one of those proposals or a different one.
Well, Parks and Public Works does have a, a subcommittee related to the Park Streets, um, that, that.
Yeah.
Is related to that. Yes.
Yeah, roots. Yeah.
Right. So, um, and I know that, well, maybe you're part of that subcommittee or something like that. So.
I can, I can say.
So you have some good update. I mean.
Not overlapping, but I.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. That, that, that police rendering to put that kind of study together. I know I just recently actually, um, you know, talking with our city engineer, those numbers obviously are much higher now. And.
Right.
Um, I mean, frankly, that's a multi-year. Very challenging project. Um, not saying we shouldn't start now, but it, it, it's something that, um. It, 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 that's a big one and a costly one. Um, I know. That the stretch from, from Perry, Perryman up to, to Mount, uh, Bald Head, uh, is a stretch that is on our current. Capital Improvement Plan, the recent update that, uh, that, that our Department of Public Works Superintendent and Engineer worked on. Because there's some retaining wall issues outside of Holiday Hill, um, that, um, are, are going to need some work sooner rather than later. So there's at least a, a stretch there that. Um, is being looked at for improvements. Um. Frankly, other. Street projects that are ahead of it, Maple Street's kind of the, in the. Immediate focus. And then Elizabeth Street, because of, you know, water main, uh, related repairs that are, are needed. Um. So that's kind of the, the ones that are on the immediate capital improvement plan, uh, in the immediate future. Um, but I think, you know, I've had a discussion with Mr. Herbert that. It is a multi-year. Project, but it's something that at some point we do have to.
Yeah, yeah. Somewhere we need to get on the, I, I agree. It's, it's costly and at some point we need to get on the, the.
But I don't know, is it really a planning commission? Because, you know, are we talking about changing zoning to where we're going to require? I mean, because I, I look at it, I'm saying, I know that we all can agree it probably needs to be done. But we don't have, but we don't have the, all we can do is recommend that you do, we can't say, okay, I recommend you put sidewalks in because it's. It's like, how do you do it? You know, so it's, I don't really think that it's planning commission's job to kind of determine how we're going to. Recommend building a sidewalk to go along Park Street. Um, and then it comes into how you're going to fund it and when you begin the timing. So I. It's agenda item, but I put it as a lower priority because the, looking at the commercial zones, looking at residential mappings, that directly is planning commission. Um, you know, because we're the. It's up to us to kind of do that. Uh, and so.
Well, I think we should, if we don't, if it, if it's not, if it's going to be a low priority and we don't think it's part of the planning commission, I think we should take it off so that people like me can lobby city council to look at this. This is an issue that needs to be addressed.
What do you feel as far as city council? Do you agree or disagree?
I think, you know, I think perk. I certainly hear from, and I, um, Park Streets, you know, I mean, if we had districts, Park Street would be my district. Um, I, I think people on Park Street feel like they have gotten a short shrift and don't have. Um, we, we haven't really tackled it. I, I mean, it's really complicated, but I do think, I mean, it, it's sort of like short-term rentals and it's like, we just need to. Like knuckle down with the right. People and say, what are we going to do? And. And, you know, and again, it probably like short-term rentals, not everybody's going to be happy because. You know, it's a, it's a hard problem to solve, but I, I, if, if council's the, and I look to our acting, um. City manager, i- if council is the place it should be with. P P W and then council, but I do think it should, we need to kind of. Because. Address it if we can.
Well, from the planning standpoint, I mean. I guess in my mind, I keep thinking, well, where would we go? We would, you can make a recommendation, but. The recommendation is, you know, to have it, but we can't determine how it's going to be done, how you're going to pay for it, how much is it going to cost? That, you know, that's things that there would, people would bring to us, not that we're creating. I don't know.
I learned earlier, we can recommend anything.
Well, we can, we can recommend whatever. I'm just from a usefulness of time. You know, it's, uh, and also does it relate to? The real things like we don't. Zoning in some ways, you know, it's.
Where does this belong?
Well, ultimately it's more of a like capital improvement on a capital improvement plan. And, you know, ultimately, you know, city council, uh, gets to. Decide what, uh, our immediate priorities are and, and, uh, certainly. Um. And, and approve the budget and it will be fun. So.
And then in terms of like what, what it looks like, is that a city council decision too? Like we're going to look at a plan, we're going to look at three plans that for this commission, study we commissioned.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And then at that point.
I think there's, there's, there's some provisions related to like capital and permit plans. I think in the, uh, that there's some planning commissions that. That may look at like an overall plan, but not getting at the level of detail of like approving. Like actual. Streets and sidewalks necessarily. Um, your historic district commission gets a lot of latitude with public space in the historic district, but.
Well, I think we should take it off if we're not, if it's not a priority and it, and it just gives. Other groups excuses not to look at it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So. What's everyone's feeling on? Looking at the commercial districts downtown? 2024?
Is that here?
No, I'm.
Is that, oh, is that different?
I'm actually. This was all looking at what we had in 2023, setting goals for 2024. We had, was for us to kind of create a list. And I was adding to the list, short-term rental, parking. Review of commercial zones, and then if time permitted, residential zones.
So I see that as number two, C two of consolidating.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So it's, and by prioritizing downtown, that sort of makes it, we bite off in a couple of chunks. So we can get something done.
Yeah. Cause basically that, that is a continuation of 23s, but if I was, if Ryan's putting together a list of what our goals are to present like to council. I would want to kind of like say it's just continuation of that, but breaking it down by review commercial and review residential. The parking and the fee in lieu of parking, where we have no progress, I kind of look at that. I think it should just be. You know, overall parking. Now, whether that's planning doing or whether council may take action before even planning, because they have the right to do it. Um, but I still think that we should be looking at it as part of our zoning reviews for both commercial and residential. Is the same thing. I don't, I always, where do you draw that line? I can make a recommendation that, okay, let's build a parking garage on this lot over here and put a level that goes over the S C A. And have like a large third and fourth level parking with, with housing or retail on levels one and two. That's a great idea. But I know that it's like a $200 million project. And why propose something like that if you don't have any of the funding for it? But, um. You know, it's, I'm sure we all got different ways we could try to address parking, but it's. But we have to kind of work with what we currently have.
I mean, in some respect, I mean, the, the, the city council did set as a priority for you're looking at. Parking and I think from more of like a, like a paid parking study perspective. Um, so, um, certainly that would have. Some impact on moving cars and, um. I, I say, you know, I mean, David's on and, and he can give some other perspective. I'll say, um. And I understand that the pressures and the, the, the frustrations at time with parking, but the same time, I think I view, uh, uh. Saga Tuck as being pretty forward-thinking in the fact that you, you've kind of eliminated your parking minimums, at least in your commercial zoning districts. I know that's placed pressure on you, but there's a lot of communities now in, in certain areas that are looking at, at getting away from setting, you know, um. Parking, uh, minimums because, you know, they've overbuilt the amount of, um, parking areas that are, are needed. And, um, so I, I can. Understanding though, that there's balance and, uh, that's a, that's a tough one to unwind with where you're at now. And Dave, do you have any just quick insight on that, that?
Yeah. I mean, it's certainly a balance. I think the general trend with parking is, is to eliminate minimums or significantly reduce, but I, I think. We're, this is a, a unique resort tourist community where we, we don't really, um. You know, it's a different type of, of, um. Traffic and, and tourist generation. So, I mean, it, when we, when we waive or reduce parking requirements, we're really relying on on-street parking or, or. Or public facilities, public garages and, and ramps and whatever it might be. So, um. So, yeah, it's, it's certainly, certainly a balance, as Ryan said.
Um. Yeah, I think we could look at. I don't know of any resort community that has imposed, you know, like paid parking. Um, I don't, I don't, are there some?
Sure. Especially with the new electronic parking. So it's not so intrusive.
Right. There's one meter per block.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's, um, you know, I could see us kind of discussing. And if we did end up moving towards it, you know, a recommendation for economic study, I would say that that needs to be part of it because there are the different views on whether or not. If you go from free parking to paid parking, you know, would people? Do it? And also I know personally, I've got many family members that if they had to pay even a dollar downtown, they would then be parking up on the hill. You know, so it's like, do you have paid parking? How far away? So it's, it's, it's worthy of discussion. Um, I would probably put it after the other topics of my list for 2024. Realistically, I don't know if we're going to get to all of them.
I think it's a good topic, but I don't know how it falls into zoning so much. That's why I also put it down. I got some great ideas. I just need lots of money. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess to the point about Park Street, is it a? Planning commission? Issue? I don't know.
Right.
Well, this is kind of a reversal. We'll just kick stuff back to counseling.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying.
Kick stuff back to.
I do.
We're, we're kicking it back to you.
On the parking, I'm just being realistic. I know how long this meeting is and we didn't have anything else on the agenda. Now, coming months, if we've got a couple of site plans and we want to continue the discussion on short-term rental until we get it wrapped up, realistically, we're probably looking April, May, June. Meetings minimum, I'm guessing. And then if we started having a conversation, looking at the commercial, now maybe we could have like Jake and Ryan and maybe Dave on who will do some of these overlays of. You know, I think we'd have to look at each of the zones currently and they do those charts like we did for waterfront where it would show. What's permitted in it, what the uses are, um, the similarities. Could we be doing those at, you know, at the same time? Maybe, you know, without taking on too much, you know. Extra workforce. But if. In my mind, I'm thinking, well, if, if that. Started like in, that's July, August, maybe by September, you've got a public hearing on changing commercial zones. Then if you were looking at residential, you're looking at October, November, December. So I'm not certain where parking fits in, given our time constraints. So I think you have to kind of prioritize. Which ones we're going to be focused on and whether or not it's, I mean, they're all good ideas, but there's only so many hours that we would have.
To Ann's point earlier about maybe we, suggesting maybe some extra meetings just to get through short-term rentals. I would certainly be up to that. I don't know if there's appetite among.
I would too.
F and council.
They know staff.
No.
No.
Um.
Well, it's more of a gathering.
But it's, but.
Well, I have to be also disrespectful of, of, of Babe's workload too with, uh, you know, cause he's covering multiple areas. So, um, I should say multiple areas, multiple communities, you know.
Okay.
So. I would think once we have the data, like let's say we, David, do you think that we would? I mean, would the data be something that we would potentially have by the April meeting or would it be more the May meeting?
Uh, the short-term rental data?
Yes.
Um, I, I think, well, I, I think. I mean, I, I would shoot for, for April for sure. Um, but I mean, we're, we're dealing with, with, um, outside agencies for this mapping. So, so we'll probably. Um, reach out to McKenna or Williams and Works. Um, and so. It's good. It's not necessarily my time on the mapping, but it's going to be myself and Ryan working with these, uh, uh, other companies to. To develop the G I S, uh, analysis. So, um, I, I mean, I, I think knowing the capacity of, of other firms, um, I think April. We can shoot for April, but, uh, worst case would be May.
Would April be more possible if we just wanted to get the data based on the number of parcels and then the number of buildings by May?
I, I think we could shoot all but for April. I'm really hoping we can. It's just, it's. We're going to have to check with the capacity of, of, of the, the G I S folks though.
Sure. And I don't know how does. If Granicus factors in, like, would they be able to assist? And I don't know, are we signing a contract with them? And when does that go into effect?
So we have, it's, it's going to take a while to actually start getting to where we can access data. In fact, they, they sent me like. There's like a list of things that I have to provide them to, so that way they can try to make sure that they're giving us back accurate information. So like, you know, whitelisting certain properties like. A bed and breakfast or hotels. So that way they, they know for sure that they're not including that information in there. And so if it's by parcel level, and so. Uh, in fact, that's a project tomorrow that I hope to sink my teeth into a little bit. So, um. Yes, I, I just don't know that, that timeline for sure yet, but I, you know, I will aim for April, but you know, may, may, maybe more realistic at this point. Um, I think the other thing just stood on the data to, to realize, uh, we had this trouble with the short-term rental task force. You guys want data for the entire city? We can do that, like number of short-term rentals, but like getting into like number of like. Housing units and commercial buildings is more cha- is, is a challenge with just the assessing data because they, it may be assessed as a commercial building and doesn't tell, you know, without looking at it one by one. you know, without looking at it one by one, um, you know, unless Dave can think of another method to do it. Uh, that, that, it's a little more tricky and takes more time, uh, if we're going to do that. So.
It's something to do, just a thought and, and I know we need to wrap up, but just a quick thought. Maybe David, if, if it's looking like you can't wrap this up, if it's, you know, the project is going to take two months, maybe we could figure out in the interim what he could get us by next month, just to Holly's point to kind of keep it moving. Like there's something.
And that's where I wonder if we can't just get the total, since we know the number of parcels, we could at least get the plotting.
Right. And I guess I'm thinking.
Get the total number of short-term rentals, all plotted, and we get the numbers to reconcile between what's in the different zones to the total, at least that we have licensed today. And so that we can kind of all work from the same number and then we can break it, have them by the May meeting, have maybe more detail on the, you know, that data broken down to buildable versus vacant.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking we asked David to aim for everything by April, but then use his own discretion. If this happens.
Right. Okay.
And we don't tell him, because I don't think we can.
No, we can't, but I'm just saying, I'm just laying out exactly what you're saying. It's like shoot for it, but realistically, if you had to do a cutoff, get it all plotted, give us the reconciliation of where they lie. And then if there was the holdup is getting the GIS to figure out multi-family versus single-family and vacant lot, then that could be subsequent month. So at least we have something that we can move forward with in April. The, now Ryan, tell me if we were looking at the commercial zones downtown. And who, I think David, you were working with the waterfront preservation. So the question then becomes, would that also fall on you if we were comparing the different zones that exist today, where we're looking at that chart, where we look at each of the zones and we're looking at their similarities? Would that fall on you also? Because again, we know, he only has so much time he can allocate, you know, to us. So I'm thinking, you know, can we do those two simulta, simulta, simultaneous? I don't really think so. What's your thoughts? Ryan, or what do you think? I mean, it's.
Yeah. Ryan, I, I think some of the, the data crunching, I mean, I, it's going to take coordination with, uh, between Ryan, myself and, uh, whoever we're, we have working with us on the GIS side. And so I think, you know, eighty percent of those hours are going to be, uh, the GIS folks that, that were, they'll be a subcontractor to me or, or a contract with a, with a, with the city and, and someone else. But, um, I mean, I, then I, then I, I could focus on, on the commercial district, uh, analysis and a comparison between. So, I mean, that's, I don't see a lot of my own hours into the, the work that goes in the GIS, but, but Ryan and I coordinating to make sure we get the right data to you.
Yeah. And one thing I just, we want to, I guess caution a little bit to the planning commission and I know we're back on short-term rentals is that, you know, it seemed to be all the discussions that the direction we've had previously has been to look at just, you know, any cat really discussion related to cap and things like that in residential districts and, you know, throwing a discussion related to commercial districts back in is, is likely going to concern some folks if we're spending time and resources on those areas. So. Now, if that's, if you have concerns with that.
Wasn't really short-term rental focused. It was looking at the different zones, knowing that we've got, you know, Water Street North, Water Street South, we have the, there's, well, the waterfront is done, but the.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, I understand what you're saying as far, as far from a zoning perspective and combining some districts and consolidating districts and, and that's a separate project. I, what I seem to be hearing from the, the planning commissioners was you wanted all the data for everywhere, including commercial zoning districts. And then maybe I was misunderstanding you.
What I was talking about was if we, the breakdown that would get us from like right now, where we, where if you added up all the areas, you had a hundred and sixty-three licenses. If there was, you know, just so we can kind of go from where with a two seventy-five for the community standpoint, if we had started two seven, say it's two seventy-five, I don't know what the exact number of short-term rentals licenses are currently. But if we said, okay, a hundred and twelve of them are in commercial or they're, you know, multi-family, one lot, but twelve licenses because there's multi-family or just so we can actually know that we've, we're capturing all of that's in the residential. And then the question becomes, well, where's the other ones? When they're in the commercial, which is outside of what we're looking at as far as caps go.
Okay. So if you, yeah, so if you're looking at like an analysis of a company or in the a commercial zoning district versus your residential districts, then, then yeah, as a whole, that's fine. As long as we're not getting to the level of having to like count housing units down here, which could cause delays, but.
I always think.
No, I, I think that we had the chart in the, I think for this task force where we just had the chart of just numbers.
Right.
And then we only plotted out in the, you know, I think, yeah. But I think to your point, I mean, our focus is really on residential. So, um, I think it's helpful to know overall and at some point, you know, if, when we have unlimited time and money and resource, it would be interesting to know on the commercial, but I bet, I bet that point never comes. That we have.
No, I think it's just, it's being able to answer. You know, when somebody says, well, there's a hundred and sixty-three shown here in the residential, but you've got two hundred and eighty. It's like, like I started off the meeting, where are the other ones? It's just having that data, but it can just be a bold. It can be, there's forty in this zone and there's forty in this, but those are all commercial and that's not being included. You know, in our short-term rental conversations.
Gotcha.
Where I think the, when we start consolidating zones, when we're looking at each of the commercial zones downtown, whether it's Water Street East, Water Street North, Water Street South, those we'd start looking at what's permitted. And, you know, but we're not talking about putting any type of caps or restrictions, you know, other than the fact that maybe one has short-term rentals allowed, one says, doesn't have short-term rental allowed. Does that make sense? I think that's the kind of discussion I see as we're looking at the commercial, um, zones.
Just from a staff perspective, a couple of other things that may be considered, you know, for goals, it doesn't have to be this year, but you know, that's coming soon. And I think you had this on your list last year, you know, updating the tri-community master plan. So I think it's, it's been kind of interesting, you know, like so Saga Tech Township just went through a zoning update, at least it's related to their current existing zoning ordinance. Uh, and Dave, I don't believe they have a separate individual master plan related to just the township, correct? They're just operating under the tri-community.
Right.
That's correct. The, the, uh, the township works, uh, they reviewed, they had three committees that actually reviewed the master plan and the three committees came up with seventy-one recommendations to implement the tri-communities master plan on the township side of things. So, so the, uh, that, that main effort was to, to implement the current tri-communities master plan as it relates to the township.
So along those same lines, you know, uh, now Douglas took the approach recently that they're, um, you know, recognizing that I think the benefit of having a tri-community master plan, but also are going through a process of an individual city landing your master plan for just their, their city. Um, and so, uh, and, and the other piece on top of that, that, you know, Dave and I have discussed that, you know, you know, at some point we, we might be due for like a overall, you know, update to our zoning ordinance as well and, and updating some definitions and combining some things. And and that gets into a larger project of looking at, you know, overall districts and then things like that. And we could certainly take it in chunks or Harvard, you know, certain, the planning commissioner would want to do that. There is some, some funding right now that's available. And David, is it for just master plan updates or is it for zoning related updates as well?
Uh, master plan zoning and, and any other, uh, efforts from a local level to, um, to increase housing supply and affordability and attainability. So I believe it's the housing readiness grant through MISTHA.
So they have dollars that are, are left over. Like they, they've gone through their first round of funding and like, hey, we have dollars and first come, first serve. And so, um, there may be some grand dollars available for us to, to do either some zoning updates or, um, uh, master planning, um, if there's a desire to, to start either one of those types of projects. I mean, your tri-community plan, you know, it's, it's past five years. And I know you've reviewed it a number of different times. Is my understanding, at least from my, my predecessor, um, but then, you know, you're going to hit that ten-year mark in, in a couple, a year and a half, really. So, right?
Yeah.
It's definitely twenty twenty-five. It's a huge part of.
You're, you're required to review it every five years. You don't have to make any changes. Um.
Technically, you're supposed to, the ten-year mark is where you have all the studies. It's like, a lot of the things we're talking about now, the economic study is really part of a master plan. You know, so a lot of things will kind of fall within, you know, the master plan for twenty-five and twenty-six.
I, can I comment?
Absolutely.
Um, because I've been the person, I've been involved with the master plans in the past, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, and then just a tiny bit in two thousand and sixteen. Um, but I'm familiar with them. Um, and I was asked two years ago when I joined planning if I would lead this one. Um, and my, uh, current position is that I'm really not that interested. And the reason I'm not is because they're never used. And they require a ton of work. I mean, a ton of work. Uh, we're not talking about, you know, a couple of meetings.
No, it's.
And we have two partners of the tri-community who are off on their own, doing their own planning. So in addition to that, and the fact that there is not a government, I, I would ask every council member, so have you read the tri-community plan? How many of you have read the tri-community plan? Supposed to be our governing, I know you have. Supposed to be our governing, I know Holly has. Um, uh, supposed to be, you know, sort of the governing doctrine in terms of how we operate together. And so, um, I, I would suggest that we understand what the state requires relative to the tri-community plan. And then talk about it in terms of how we fulfill that obligation. I mean.
I'd make that a higher priority, higher goal for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah.
A, a, and if there's any, I mean, I, I have become a big fan of the man. I mean, it's a, it's a great, it's a great document. And it really is a, the policy guide for, um, so that not only for us to, you know, talk about it more, um, and use it. And, um, you know, work with council to maybe spend some, a workshop or something so that people think, oh, we should look at the master plan. If we in fact still think it's valid, I, I think it's a great plan.
I do too. I mean, my enthusiasm for the plan itself has it blamed. It's just that it's really frustrating.
Right. No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and it, when I say a lot of work.
Oh, it's.
A lot of work. Yeah, because we had that in our.
And the other.
Training sessions.
Is that it's, um, I mean, given Saga Tuck, given Douglas, given Saga Tuck, given the township. I mean, we actually are better together than operating separately. Because not one of those entities has everything that we need in order to make, you know, our communities thrive and flourish.
Yeah, they need us. We need them.
We need them. They need us. And this, um, you know, it's really, really disappointing to learn that off they've gone and they're doing their own work. And I don't know how that works since we're a tri-community and they're off doing their own plans. So anyway, um, until, uh, and then there has to be adequate resources devoted to it.
Correct.
And, um, so I think at least we should make a decision this year in terms of how we're going to go.
So, um, yeah, maybe that's just a reworded version then.
Then for the sake of time, would everybody be in agreement that our goals for twenty-four is the continuation and finishing of the short-term rental discussion? Consolidation and review of zones, both commercial and residential. Laying a base plan for how we'd move forward with the master plan. And then if time permits, looking further at parking. I don't think it's all achievable in the next nine months, but those four, would we all kind of be in agreement on that?
Yeah. And I think city council, um, you know, one of the priorities was at least a plan for parking um, or a plan to plan for parking. Um, and so that's, you know, I think Ryan can raise that with, you know, I mean, let city council know that it's not a high, it's not high on planning list.
Or we couldn't.
In fact, it's probably a council issue mostly. I don't know.
Okay.
Paid parking certainly is more of a council issue. Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, I, I agree. And in fact, I'm happy to make a motion if that's what we need to do.
We, we, it's just a consensus that that's what we would list as our goals.
You have a consensus or if you want to formally vote on it, have at it.
I don't.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I will make a motion that our goals for twenty twenty-four will be to, I can't remember your exact word, but reconsider.
Finish.
Or finish, uh, the.
Short-term rental.
Oh, yeah. So I was actually thinking about the tri-community master plan first. Sorry, I was going in order of what's on my sheet, but, um, consider and review the tri-community master plan. Complete the discussion of short-term rentals with respect to potential caps. Um, third consolidation of zoning districts, commercial and residential, and then last, lastly, parking. Does that cover it?
Take a second. I think on this, can we just do a voice or should we? I think we can do voice. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. It's unanimous. That concludes.
And let it be known, DJ and I had the same vote.
Yes. Communications, Ryan's got an excellent project report that he presented. He's sent it to our kits. Hopefully everybody has a chance to kind of read through it. There was some, was there other communications? Um, I know there were some emails in that that I had seen, but I don't know if they were specific to communication.
Not for this packet, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I know certainly the city council received a lot of communication, uh, but I don't recall any of it being directed at the, the planning commission.
Mr. Baldwin emailed us all, but I think that came today. So it would have been, it would have been in the packet.
And so it was something that wasn't in the packet, but it will be, again, I, that's why I was like, I know there's an email out there, but, um, and then again, the report of officers, Ryan, do you want to say anything about your report? Are you good with everybody just reading what's in here, please?
Happy to answer any questions, Mr.
And then we have, is there any questions for Ryan?
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, very much. Thank you for all you're doing. Uh, which moves us to public comment, which is now at this point, you're limited to three minutes. It can be on any topic. If you're in the room, you can go up to the microphone. If you're online, you raise your hand. And again, just tell us your name and your address. Anyone in the room have a general public comment.
Diana Decker, one twenty-eight, Elizabeth. Uh, just a couple of things that I've written down here, uh, regarding, um, the affordable housing. Um, a couple of years back, we met, uh, Ryan, um, Kilpatrick. We met at the Sautek Center for the Arts and he, uh, had a meeting with a bunch of city residents here about how to go about that and what he's done in other communities to get grants and money for affordable housing. It was a very good audience. A lot of our, um, township firemen were there and, and so on, and, and people who work in the community who are renting and, and so on. Um, so they were there and, uh, the city of South Haven, uh, they've just had their third meeting with Ryan Kilpatrick on affordable housing. So they have really, um, way ahead here on trying to, uh, you know, have that issue with affordable housing. Um, regarding the master plan, that was a great comment, Bobby, because I've watched that for years. Um, with, you know, Douglas is Douglas, Sautek Township is Sautek Township, City of Sautek is City of Sautek. They're all three different communities. So that doesn't, uh, many, many communities have their own master plan. And that's what it really boils down to, and that's what they're going to, you know, towards. Um, regarding, uh, the rentals, um, the condos that Mr. David mentioned before, um, a lot of the, I mean, we can go right down the row here. And a lot of them are, you know, no less than thirty days. And like example, East Shore Harbor has fifty-some units and they, they're, those master deeds cost a lot of money to amend and so on, uh, thousands and thousands of dollars and that they've amended. And there are two times, well, they allow two times, eh, uh, for short-term rent. You know, I mean, one week here, you can do six month here, you can do one week here, only two times a year. Regarding the data for the map, you know, the assess, I've been fortunate to work with three different assessors. So, uh, regarding your data that you need for rental, you print that, uh, residential R1 zone, you take those two hundred some applications and you look at that parcel number and boom, 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 boom. And Ryan knows what I'm talking about there, but, um, so it's pretty, um, not that hard to, uh, to do. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Um, you all know who I am.
Yes.
You know what? For years and years and years, I've heard Saga Tech's dying. Oh, no one's going to come. Oh, the score is falling in. You know what? It hasn't happened. And JC, you can, you can go down. And JC, you can, you can go down and get a drink and get a meal at the Butler, Phil's, the corner bar. Saga Tech, they seem to reinvent themselves. And the business people, oh, I'm broke, I'm broke, I'm losing everything. And then I see him with a new Beamer. A new Tesla. It's a good place.
Thanks, Jay. No, we appreciate it very much. You have a good evening. We're coming down then. Online, I see Gary, you have your hand up. Is that your public comment or?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. And just give us your name and address and then with your three minutes.
Gary Kemp at, uh, ten twenty-two Holland Street. Um, I like the way you're moving to try to, uh, collect this data. And evaluate things. I wished I'd had a chance to suggest this idea earlier, but one of the things I think you should look at is the allowable occupancy. Of each of the units as you're mapping them, because it'll tell you how many people are going to be at that location. It's also gonna tell you how many people are gonna be cut from that location according to the new rules. And it also will, uh, be indicative if you can take a look at the parking, what an issue you're gonna have. One of the things that I, that I think you should look at when you do your annual evaluation of the residency is off-street parking. Because off-street parking, like I have one small cottage and it has parking for five or six cars. And it's only, and only can occupy, uh, six people are the only number that can be there. So I have plenty of parking in that. Uh, and parking and the occupancy and size of the house, uh, to me are critical issues. And it would be really easy to add allowable occupancy. Um, and it does make a difference. Um, like I'm on the Holland corridor right now and I have a, about five or six of budding. Uh, STRs across the street from my home and my rental cottage. And, but they're two, they're like two bedrooms. And so there are four people, maybe six people if they have a height of bed. Um, but it, it's when you got two, when you got four people there, a lot of times it rents two people. Uh, you don't typically have the noise problems or the other problems that you tend to have in the big, the big residencies. And especially up on the hill, I think there's a lot of problems from just talking to some of my friends who live up there. Based on how many people are in these houses, the bigger, the bigger the crowd, the louder the problem, the bigger the problem. So I would suggest that you have David try to just add that occupancy number, uh, to each of the units as you're mapping them. Put in the dot on them, cause I think you're gonna find that would be very useful information. And that, that's basically my input. So I thought it was a good meeting and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll make some real headway. And not overly cap things, cause I think a twenty percent cap is very arbitrary. May feel good to Holly, but it may not feel as good to me. I'd rather see a, a higher one maybe. But in any event, it's just so arbitrary. Uh, I think if you have the more data we have, the more you'll be able to convince people of what you're doing. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for that. I think it's actually, you know, a valid point when it does come to looking at density. Because there is a difference between a house that could have twelve versus a house that could have two or four. So, uh, that could be something that we consider down the road also. So, uh, thank you for that. And also just in closing, to kind of remind people that as we look at the short-term rental and if we were to make any type of recommendations. Again, planning's only making recommendations. So the final decision would always come from, you know, council and their decision as to. You know, whether they would follow, you know, that. So just kind of throwing that out, you know, we can only make a recommendation as far as that goes. Moving on, and that closes, I don't see any other hands. So I'm gonna say I wanna close public comments, which that would take us to any commissioner comments. I'll go around the room. I'll start with Bobby. You have anything you want to add to tonight?
Oh, no, the only thing. No, the only thing I feel compelled to mention, I mean, I don't wanna keep, keep driving down into this short-term rental thing, but, you know, the, the, the data. I spent quite a bit of time analyzing the data and I mentioned this during the council meeting, last council meeting and the data on the survey. And, um, I, I'd be more than happy to bring the results of the analysis I did, but there, there is a very clear correlation between. The zones, the, the residence response in the zones that have the higher density of short-term rentals. To the thresholds of caps that they wanna see. And specifically the hill, which I believe showed sixty-four percent. And then the other district was at seventy. You could correlate the data directly. And each one of those responses, and they were all, all going in favor of the twenty percent or lower numbers. So I just wanna, you know. If we're gonna be data dependent, I think we should be looking at that data as well. Um, that's meaningful. It shows, you know, in my opinion, it shows the, the. You know, the feelings of the, of the people that are responding. So just wanted to get that out there. Otherwise, I think it's been a good meeting. It's a challenging subject. And, um, thank everyone for coming tonight.
Yeah, nothing to add. I, I did wanna address Gary's comment that twenty percent wasn't arbitrary.
Okay. And just in closing, thank you everyone again. David, I know if he's still online, we appreciate what you put in so far. And we look forward to seeing what you're able to kind of come up with, you know, by our April meetings and as we move forward. Ryan, obviously you, Sarah, the rest of the team, you're doing just Yoman's job on behalf of the entire city, if I can. I see so much of this, the things that I think that we wanna try to do. I love the fact that we've got commissioners that are willing to put time in. To do more than just what comes before us. But at the same time, I just, you know, we have to be respectful. We got a very small staff that we're trying to work with. And also budgets that we have to kind of factor in, cause I don't, that's another thing I gotta talk to Ryan about. I don't know how this gets paid for as we're doing, you know, some of these studies. So, um. But anyhow, and then to your point, I think as we get to looking at the numbers, yes, we should be going back to the survey. And even considering whether or not another survey should be done, that's more specific, cause there was some complaints about the survey that we did during the short-term task force. But with that, I'm done with my comments. I will actually move and ask if anybody would like to call for adjournment.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Wow, that was unanimous too. Look at that, man.
Thank you all. I swear, I was like, this will be over by nine o'clock and it was.